Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, May 20th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone calls. The time is now 10:20 a.m. and we have eight members present. Mr. LaBanche has just checked in, but we're still too shy of a quorum. But thus, this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. We also have our annual Pioneer Woman of the Year Awards, which will be facilitated by Mr. Zein. But as we await a couple of other council members to join us before beginning those ceremonies, let me recognize Councilmember Perry for our first presentations. As soon as we reach a quorum, we'll turn to Mr. Zein for the Pioneer Woman Awards and then return to the balance of presentations. And let us not forget, we also have an agenda of business items to take care of this morning, so we'll also take care of the consent calendar as soon as we possibly can.
Wrap around here, okay? And then you stand like on the sides, okay? Come on, so you can be on TV. Come on. Here, you want to get up here, stand all the way up here. Everybody stand up here. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. I am standing here with the Carver Middle School students and their principal, Marcy Harmon. And the Accelerated School, well, I'll recognize them in a second because it's kind of crowded up here, but Lauren Trejo, who's the head of supervision, and their art teacher, Aya Peard. I'm honored to introduce this fine group of young people today. Please join me in welcoming the young people from Carver Middle School and the Accelerated School, both from the Ninth Council District. Let's give them a big hand. We're honoring them today for winning the 2005 Los Angeles Police Department Public Safety mural contest. The contest asks students from schools all around the city to create original, thought-provoking murals about public safety issues that affect their communities as part of a public information campaign. Both Carver Middle School and the Accelerated School received top honors in this competition, with Carver winning first place and the Accelerated School winning third place. I wanted to take this opportunity to formally applaud their work. Both schools exhibited their commitment to public safety and to our community, and I want us to thank them all for the time and the energy they put into their projects, and congratulations on a job well done. And what I'd like for the kids to do, they're on TV and they're very excited, and we'll move the Carver School kids to the back and then let the Accelerated kids just come up for a minute and get on the screen. Okay, Carver, you can, okay, thank you. And the Accelerated School, come on up here just for a minute, very quickly, and we'll present the certs in the back. Okay. Okay, Accelerated School, don't be shy. Stand up here, come on.
I'm not shaming.
Okay, come on, come on, come on. I just wanted you to see them. This is the, these are the young people from the Accelerated School, our premier charter school right here in the Ninth Council, high school. Now it's a high school, thank you. Okay, yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you. Premier Charter School in the Ninth Council District, and they took third place in this competition, and so I wanted to make sure we recognized them as well and let give, let's give them a hand, thank you. Okay. All right, we're going in the back now, take pictures, okay? Okay, go back that way.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And let me take a pause in presentations and ask Councilmember Cindy Mesakowski to introduce a special guest in chambers this morning, and we should get used to his presence around here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you all know, we had an election on Tuesday, and there was a lot of focus on some citywide issues, but Council District 11 was the only council district in which there was a real council race because I am not eligible to serve. And I am very happy to bring in today someone who really needs no introduction here, to the council members, to the people in the chambers, but I thought it'd be very appropriate, and I'm very honored to be able to present to the City Council today, Councilmember -elect, Bill Rosendahl, the new council member for the 11th Council District.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I look forward to becoming a public servant in this great city, and it's a great honor and I'm humbled by it. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Bill, and I think I speak for the entire council when I tell you we're ready and willing to help in any way that we can through your transition period. We congratulate you and we're looking forward to working with you. Ms. Perry for another presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to introduce to you the young people from the Heart Project as they walk up. Since they worked on a project in the Central Avenue Jazz Park, and it is a tile mural recognizing art as vital and essential to our society and our community, this project linked young people, artists, and our community to present new work. Many of the young people behind me attend alternative high schools and work with professional artists in programs that move through three levels: workshops, public presentations, residencies, and scholarships. The Heart Project believes that overlooked young people can be extraordinarily creative and that artists are a significant civic resource and that their ideas, collaborations, and work benefit our entire community. This year, our students engaged in creating a tile mural on Central Avenue that reflected the history that the park represents and will be in
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, May 20th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:20 a.m. and we have eight members present. Mr. LaBange has just checked in, but we're still too shy of a quorum. But thus, this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. We also have our annual Pioneer Woman of the Year Awards, which will be facilitated by Mr. Zine. But as we await a couple of other council members to join us before beginning those ceremonies, let me recognize Councilmember Perry for our first presentations. As soon as we reach a quorum, we'll turn to Mr. Zine for the Pioneer Woman Awards and then return to the balance of presentations. And let us not forget, we also have an agenda of business items to take care of this morning, so we'll also take care of the consent calendar as soon as we possibly can. Ms. Perry?
Wrap around here, okay? And then you stand like on the sides, okay? Come on, so you can be on TV. Come on. You want to get, here, stand all the way up here. Everybody stand up here. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. I am standing here with the Carver Middle School students and their principal, Marcy And the Accelerated School, well, I'll recognize them in a second because it's kind of crowded up here, but Lauren Trejo, who's the head of supervision, and their art teacher, Aya Peard. I'm honored to introduce this fine group of young people today. Please join me in welcoming the young people from Carver Middle School and the Accelerated School, both from the Ninth Council District. Let's give them a big hand. We're honoring them today for winning the 2005 Los Angeles Police Department Public Safety mural contest. The contest asks students from schools all around the city to create original, thought-provoking murals about public safety issues that affect their communities as part of a public information campaign. Both Carver Middle School and the Accelerated School received top honors in this competition, with Carver winning first place and the Accelerated School winning third place. I wanted to take this opportunity to formally applaud their work. Both schools exhibited their commitment to public safety and to our community, and I want us to thank them all for the time and the energy they put into their projects, and congratulations on a job well done. And what I'd like for the kids to do, they're on TV and they're very excited, and we'll move the Carver School kids to the back and then let the Accelerated kids just come up for a minute and get on the screen. Okay, Carver, you can, okay, thank you. And the Accelerated School, come on up here just for a minute, very quickly, and we'll present the certs in the back. Okay. Okay, Accelerated School, don't be shy. Stand up here, come on.
I'm not shy.
Okay, come on, come on, come on. I just wanted you to see them. This is the, these are the young people from the Accelerated School, our premier charter school right here in the Ninth Council, high school. Now it's a high school, thank you. Okay, yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you. Premier Charter School in the Ninth Council District, and they took third place in this competition, and so I wanted to make sure we recognize them as well and let give, let's give them a hand. Thank you. Okay. All right, we're going in the back now, take pictures, okay? Go back that way.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And let me take a pause in presentations and ask Councilmember Cindy Misakowski to introduce a special guest in chambers this morning, and we should get used to his presence around here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you all know, we had an election on Tuesday, and there was a lot of focus on some citywide issues, but Council District 11 was the only council district in which there was a real council race because I am not eligible to serve. And I am very happy to bring in today someone who really needs no introduction here, to the council members, to the people in the chambers, but I thought it'd be very appropriate, and I'm very honored to be able to present to the City Council today, Councilmember-elect Bill Rosendahl, the new council member for the 11th Council District.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I look forward to becoming a public servant in this great city, and it's a great honor and I'm humbled by it. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Bill, and I think I speak for the entire council when I tell you we're ready and willing to help in any way that we can through your transition period. We congratulate you and we're looking forward to working with you. Ms. Perry for another presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to introduce to you the young people from the Heart Project as they walk up. They worked on a project in the Central Avenue Jazz Park, and it is a tile mural recognizing art as vital and essential to our society and our community. This project linked young people, artists, and our community to present new work. Many of the young people behind me attend alternative high schools and work with professional artists in programs that move through three levels: workshops, public presentations, residencies, and scholarships. The Heart Project believes that overlooked young people can be extraordinarily creative and that artists are a significant civic resource and that their ideas, collaborations, and work benefit our entire community. This year, our students engaged in creating a tile mural on Central Avenue that reflected the history that the park represents and will be completed in time for our 10th anniversary of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, and I personally wanted to thank these students for their hard work, creativity, and commitment to our community. Thank you, and let's give them a big hand.
These young people are ready to make beauty with you. Genevieve Escava will introduce the students.
Hello and good morning. My name is Genevieve Escava, and I am from Central High's continuation, Silver Lake Branch. On behalf of my peers, the Heart Project, and myself, I would like to thank all of you for being here this morning. These 10 young adults you see behind me are all proud to be here today. I am proud to be here today. We began our journey as individuals, but are ending as one. We began as students, but are ending as leaders. In our 12 weeks of leadership class, we had a mantra, and that mantra is, "The currency of communication is collaboration." This mantra is not just something we say, but something we've learned to live. And what it means is the continuous exchange of information allows us to work together by being ethical and saying what we mean and meaning what we say. Collaboration is the currency of communication, and we have all learned that. Next, you'll be hearing how this experience has affected and transformed our lives from the following students in the following order. Guillermo Sanchez, Amelia Earhart Continuation High School. Brenda Hernandez, Pueblo de Los Angeles Continuation High School. Jose Manchacano, Amelia Earhart Continuation High School. Janelle Montano, Amelia Earhart Continuation High School. Robert Reyes, Angeles Plaza College Preparatory School. Hiro Rodriguez, Central High Beverly Small Learning Center Branch. Gabriel Perez, Central High School Beverly Small Learning Center Branch. Arturo Hernandez, Angeles Plaza College Preparatory School. Peter Herrera, Amelia Earhart Continuation High School. Alex Ariola, Santa Monica Community Day School. And Raúl Becerra, Santa Monica Community Day School. Thank you.
A leader is a devoted and inspired individual with the traits and personality capable of guiding a certain group, no matter what size, to a specific goal. We are all leaders in our own significant way. We are here with our peers, and we are the Heart Project.
The Heart Project collaborates with continuation high school students across LA County by bringing artists into our classrooms, exhibiting our work at major LA cultural institutions, offering us after-school opportunities to study theater, fashion, radio production, and leadership development. Also, the Heart Project provides us with scholarships at LA art schools such as Otis College of Art and Design and the Arts Center College of Design.
For the past 12 weeks, we've taken a leadership class in Pasadena Arts Center. We've caught the subway and buses from as far away as Santa Monica to meet once a week for two hours. We've shared our ideas and experiences, and we've learned the significance of leadership, what leadership means to us, how to become leaders, and the qualities of leadership.
We, the leaders of the Heart Project, are here to explain how we have committed to become more organized, articulate, creative, responsible, and persistent adults who can make LA a safer place. We plan to make LA safer through the depth and emotion that we convey in our art to change the way we see our future.
Our personal creativity changes our community. Where we come from, conditions are unsafe and impoverished, which does not make us feel secure. This experience has taught us to be different people who are devoted to setting good examples not only for ourselves, but also for future generations.
We have changed ourselves by not getting involved in illegal activities that endanger our communities. We think differently when we are faced with situations where in the past, we would have gone along with the crowd. We have learned to take control, we have learned to take control of situations through communications. We are leaders, not followers.
We always want to progress in life and take all the opportunities that the world offers. By coming to our leadership classes, we've learned and studied techniques and skills which prepare us to use our personal creativity. When we go back to our neighborhoods, we tell our peers, parents, and neighbors how we have grown.
We hope to inspire our peers and encourage them to open their minds and take actions to make a better society. By showing them how we've changed and by practicing our skills such as writing, viewing things differently, reflecting a different state of mind and point of view, we are trying to influence them to accomplish anything they're capable of by breaking stereotypes of young adults from similar backgrounds.
With the help of art and communications, we've learned to teach others of their potentials and personal creativities.
As a group, we have entered a new stage of our lives. Learning about our agility as thinkers and artists help us survive our adversity. By funding more programs such as the Heart Project, the LA City Council helps more teens like us who need opportunities like this to help, to help us learn and grow.
We've taken the first step by transforming ourselves into leaders. Now it's your responsibility to reach out and give us a hand.
I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And congratulations. Colleagues, let's take another pause in presentations, and Madam Crook, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, LaBange, LaLomisakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Wyssine, Padilla, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items known for public hearing. Item number one, the applicant requests a continuance to May 31st.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing item number one to May 31st? Seeing none, so ordered. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through 13. And on number six, the HCD report has been submitted, and I believe on number four, there is a motion to withdraw this from the agenda.
Okay, and rejection, colleagues, to withdrawing item four from the agenda. Madam Crook, is this something that is referred back to a committee?
Yes, the item is in committee, and it was placed on the agenda pending approval, but however, there were still some questions in committee.
Okay, so the matter is withdrawn and referred back to committee. We have a report on item six. That'll be the recommendation before us, colleagues. These items have had public hearings. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. LaBange?
Special on 13?
13, call special by Mr. LaBange. Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, item number four to be special for the purpose of removing from the calendar because it's still pending in committee.
We're about to do that and refer it back to committee. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Seven and nine.
Seven call special, nine call special by Mr. Parks. Any other specials? Seeing none of the balance of the items, Madam Crook, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 31. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, the council shall consider items 14 through 31 today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are therefore opened and closed. Colleagues, any specials? Request for specials on 14 through 31? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those matters are approved.
On the continued agenda, items 32 and 33 are items for which public hearings have been held.
And a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, request for specials 32 or 33. Mr. Parks?
32, and can we get 30 forthwith?
Fourthwith on item number 30, and item 32, call special by Mr. Parks. Leaving item 33 on the desk.
Item six, forthwith also.
Fourthwith on item six. Mr. Reyes?
Item number three, forthwith, please.
Fourthwith on item number three. Anybody wishing to call item 33 special? If not, then let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and I believe that's the end of our special, excuse me, our regular agenda. Let's take a momentary recess in our regular agenda. Madam Crook, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, LaBange, LaLomisakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Wyssine, Padilla, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. I believe we have a two-item agenda. I have a card on item number one. Other special agenda, we'll call that special for just a moment, leaving item number two. I do not have speaker cards for item number two. Public hearing is open and closed. Members of the council wishing to call item two special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Now let's continue item one from the special agenda back to the regular meeting. We can now adjourn the special meeting and come back to the regular meeting. So colleagues, let me ask you all a question. We have a couple of items called special. We have a large number of presentations today. We have a number of members wishing to leave early, so we will be losing a quorum. My guess is in the next 40 to 45 minutes. Shall we go to presentations and come back to the matters? Anything that can be continued till Tuesday, or should we go through business and return to presentations? Okay, why don't we go through the items called special? Colleagues, I'll ask you to tell me if this is something that can be done quickly or something that can be continued. We have items seven, nine, and 32, call special by Mr. Parks. Anything that we can continue? Are these quick items?
They can all be continued. They're just, two of them are fairly ease, quick, but 32, I think, may require some discussion from the Housing Department.
Then if there's no objection or any problems with continuing item 32, let's continue that till this Tuesday on seven and nine. Mr. Parks?
Yes, seven and nine, I think, could be handled quickly.
Well, let's do that now. Item seven now before us, colleagues. Mr. Parks?
I'd like to ask, let's see, the staff to come up. Mr. President, my main concern is that on this issue, although it is an issue that's asked merely for an extension, my main concern is that the attachment that we currently have, at least from our records, at least two lawsuits that are dealing with this action by the council. We also have at least one Ethics Commission investigation, but yet, we still have documents coming forward from Mrs. Smith, who appears, at least from information we have, that has a significant conflict of interest as it relates to dealing with this deferred comp. It just seems to be adding to our liability that she's still acting in that role and continue to put forth paperwork in which we're asked to judge on. I know we sent information to the city attorney's office, and they expressed that they addressed it by sending it to Ethics, and I don't know the status of that investigation, but it is something that concerns me, that we're still receiving paperwork in which she's acting in that official capacity.
I cannot really respond to the Ethics Investigation. I apologize for that. I'm from the Personnel Department. She's still the president of the Board of Refund Compensation.
And I don't know technically whether this is something that possibly, or these issues should be going before Board of Refund Powers if we have the standing kinds of conflict of interest while litigation is going on that is being investigated primarily from her actions on the board and her actions through this, and maybe Ms. Misakowski may comment on that.
We, since this may be a little bit more involved, why don't we continue this till Tuesday and ask both the city attorney and the Ethics Commission here to address this? We may have to go into a closed session on that, but since the issue of the continuance, it's not necessarily a problem, let's just continue this till Tuesday and ask that those other two agencies be, report to us on Tuesday.
Very good, thank you.
Without objection, and Mr. City Attorney, if you can assist us in ensuring that the right personnel from the city attorney's office is here on Tuesday for this item. Next item, please.
Item number nine was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
On that item that we just finished, we could ask it for one week because I won't be available the following week. Number nine, I just asked if the police department is here?
Police Department here on item number nine to answer questions.
I just have one. No, this is something that we failed, I failed to do with public safety. We just want to add one note to that file, that in the discussion dealing with the police department efforts to refine their booking process, they talked about the issue of having station officers possibly armed to take the place of police officers while they're transporting prisoners. I would just ask that we look at possibly the newly formed General Services Police Department with armed officers to take on that responsibility before we add another uniformed armed operation in the city, and that's just an additional request.
Mr. Zine?
Mr. Detective Harrieta, your expertise in this area, please?
Not much.
None. Thank you. No, I concur. We do want to establish a new protocol because of the jails that are closing, so that's what it's about, and if we can utilize that new service, that'll be great. Thank you.
We'll report back on it.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Misakowski?
I would just like to formally amend, then, the action before us, which was noting and following the first report, asking police department to report back. Let's include that the police department and General Services report back collectively on which agency is best able to handle the transport, particularly with the office, the new office of public safety that will be created, so we have both offices involved in the dialogue.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item is item 13, call special by Mr. LaBange. Is this a quick item or something we should carry over for Tuesday?
Real quick, Department of Transportation, cut me off in 60 seconds as soon as they hit the bench, Alex. How's that for you this morning? Is that all right, Mr. President?
All right.
Department of Transportation, members, this is a situation where our handheld ticket machines that we have will now be connected in the state. Unfortunately, sometimes tickets will be issued to vehicles when those vehicles are really on the hot list of the LAPD. Tragically, a woman was kidnapped in El Segundo. She was found in San Diego. They had multiple tickets on her car. Tragically, a woman was kidnapped in Burbank. She was found in Central Los Angeles with the tickets on her car. This should prevent that. Right, give her 30 seconds. Robert, I'm sorry.
Robert Angulo, Department of Transportation. Yes, in response to the council motion, we've been working with LAPD and Department of Justice to be able to secure that information. We've currently downloaded the stolen vehicle file. We are trying to secure approval to download additional files, including missing persons and persons of interest. Once we have that information, we'll be able to coordinate more closely with LAPD to be able to alert them as quickly as possible of finding these cars.
I appreciate that, members. It's just, it's a small effort, you know, will go a long way because there's nothing worse than we finding a abandoned car that was wanted by the police department that has multiple tickets because they didn't move it for street cleaning or some other fine such as that. I ask for an aye vote, and I thank you, and I thank the department's work and continued work on this. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Ms. Grohl?
Thank you. You were in such a rush to go. Thank you, Tom. I know this was your initiative and motion. For, for me, we talked about this, I think it, when it was Alex, when you had the city council meeting in his district, we talked about at that time making sure that you had the handhelds available to you to get the stolen vehicle information and how important that was because oftentimes you were ticketing cars that actually were stolen, and it was an opportunity for you to move much more quickly. And obviously, now with our pilot program, that also has been a benefit of that, of having that knowledge base and information. This next step that Mr. LaBange has recommended really does go much farther in the ability for you to identify vehicles, whether it had have been through Ambulert, which I know was talked about in Public Safety and Transportation, that kind of information, getting to LAPD and then getting to the Department of Transportation. And I think what we're finding here, colleagues, is the wonderful coordination now between DOT and LAPD to help us solve some of those, not only quality of life issues, but even more important...
them as quickly as possible of finding these cars.
I appreciate that, members. It's just, it's a small effort, you know, will go a long way, because there's nothing worse than we finding a abandoned car that was wanted by the Police Department that has multiple tickets because they didn't move it for street cleaning or some other fine such as that. I ask for an aye vote, and I thank you, and I thank the department's work and continued work on this. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Ms. Grohl?
Thank you. You were in such a rush to go. Thank you, Tom. I know this was your initiative and motion. For, for me, we talked about this, I think, when it was Alex, when you had the city council meeting in his district, we talked about at that time making sure that you had the handhelds available to you to get the stolen vehicle information and how important that was, because oftentimes you were ticketing cars that actually were stolen, and it was an opportunity for you to move much more quickly. And obviously, now with our pilot program, that also has been a benefit of that, of having that knowledge base and information. This next step that Mr. Labonge has recommended really does go much farther in the ability for you to identify vehicles, whether it had have been through Ambulert, which I know was talked about in public safety and transportation, that kind of information, getting to LAPD and then getting to the Department of Transportation. And I think what we're finding here, colleagues, is the wonderful coordination now between DOT and LAPD to help us solve some of those, not only quality of life issues, but even more importantly, public safety issues in these neighborhoods. And so this type of coordination and idea, I know there were some challenges with justice and sharing of information, but I'm glad that through the leadership of Tom Labonge, that we were able to, in your department, to also make this happen with the assistance of the Los Angeles Police Department. So I wanted to say thank you and congratulations. And for the public out there, this is really going to be a big benefit, and it's building upon the foundation of that information, which you were able to get for stolen vehicles and now for any other vehicles, excuse me, that have been involved in a crime. So we look forward to that, and hopefully you'll keep the kind of statistics that we have on our stolen vehicle program and demonstrate its successfulness, so that it may not be so difficult next time when we go to the Department of Justice or other levels of government to say, this is how it works and this is how effective it is. So I assume you'll be taking that kind of information and putting it together for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so maybe if Mr. Labonge, I don't know if this was included in, and if we had maybe a six-month status report on this to come back to council, I think that would be great.
We can do that.
You can do that. Okay, and that would demonstrate and see, six, is that okay with you, Mr. Labonge?
I just think that normal oral reports to the commission, committee would be good on that, so they could move this file.
Yes. No, no, so it would move, it would move forward, just come back and a part of the file would just say, report back in six months on this success.
If there's any objection to that.
Thank you.
We will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no further speakers on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And I believe the last item remaining on the desk is item one that was carried over from the special meeting. I have to count if Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins would come forward at this time.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Before this proposal of two thousand five and two thousand six, Proposition K assessment is passed, we must be aware of the cost of enrollment for our children that is causing them to reconsider school. For example, the cost of books has become higher in costs because of four countries that at this time we has, that has decided to withdraw their books from USA because of the Iraq War. These books also, in dealing with the size and over fifteen chapters that must be completed in a two-and-a-half-month time, of each semester is out of order. I believe we need less chapters to complete in two-and-a-half months course of each semester.
Thank you, ma'am.
Like half of these chapters in one semester. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes public comment for this item. Members of the council wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll. This is item one from the special meeting. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with please. And if those, that's the balance of the items remaining on the desk. Let's return now to presentations. First, a brief introduction by Councilmember Labonge.
A brief introduction. We had an exciting morning. It's an exciting Friday in Los Angeles, but we posted our newest Sister City sign from San Salvador. Carlos, stand up there. Give him a big hand, our newest Sister City, San Salvador Isabel Cardenas. Carlos, thank you, everybody. Congratulations. Thank you. Gracias, Mr. President.
Mr. Reyes for some comment, and then Mr. Zine will follow with presentations.
Yes, I just want to thank Councilmember Labonge and representatives from San Salvador. We all know that we are an international city. Their contribution to our economy, how we develop relationships is very important. I visit Salvador. The remittance program is tremendous, and let's keep up the good work, and let's build our relationships. Thank you so much.
Mr. Zine?
Good morning. I was at the celebration this morning where we unveiled the sign along with Councilmember Labonge and members, members of the community. I will be visiting your beautiful country in July, and I look forward to that. I know that there's a hurricane going through right now, so we wish the people safety. And to all of you, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for your tenacity, your determination for making this happen for the beautiful people who are here from across the border. And we have that relationship that's been built that's now very solid, very strong. And I think it was six thousand miles, if I'm not mistaken, or four thousand miles, or three thousand miles, five thousand miles, but they're neighbors. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, if we could here, please welcome the Vice Mayor of Managua City, Alexis Aguirre. Give him a hand. He's here for the Sister City Festival. Vice Mayor from Managua City, Nicaragua.
Mr. Zine to move our presentations along.
Thank you, Mr. President, and joining me is Councilmember Ed Reyes, and we are going to recognize Henry Alfaro, ABC Seven Eyewitness News Reporter, who's retiring from the news business. Henry Alfaro, come on up. Henry Alfaro, when I heard about his retirement, I was shocked. He's a young man, and why he's retiring? He wants to pursue other ventures in life. Henry Alfaro, award-winning newscaster and co-host of Vista LA joined Eyewitness News Team in June nineteen seventy. Distinguished news career has earned him many honors for his reporting, including five Golden Mike Awards, four Emmys, and being nominated for the coveted Peabody Award. Henry, throughout his years working in Southern California area, has been recognized for his many contributions to the Mexican-American and Latino communities. Been honored by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, Los Angeles City Council, Orange County Board of Supervisors, and numerous other organizations. Also the recipient of the famed Eagle Award for Excellence in the Field of Television Reporting by Nosotros, and was named the top Chicano newsman in Southern California by the California Association of Latinos in Broadcasting. The National Hispanic Media Association honored Henry for having the best television news report in the United States. Henry was presented with the Humanitarian Award from the League of United Latino-American Communities National Organization for serving as a role model to the Latino community. And he was also presented with the Ray of Hope by Hispanic Organization for Political Equality. Ray of Hope is an all-professional women's organization, and Henry was the first male to be honored. Also named one of the top one hundred influential Latinos in the United States by Hispanic Magazine. In nineteen ninety five, Henry was named Alumni of the Year at Pepperdine University, also founder of the California Chicano News Media Association. Born and raised in Los Angeles and Lincoln Heights, attended Cathedral High School, received journalism and football scholarships to Pepperdine University, where he earned his bachelor's degree in English. Los Angeles City Council congratulates and commends Henry Alfaro for, on his retirement, and best wishes for his future endeavors, prosperity, and happiness. Henry Alfaro, Channel Seven Eyewitness News. And before I turn over to my colleague, Ed Reyes, I just want to make some personal comments. I've known Henry for many, many years, and I'll never forget the day that I was driving down a street, and Henry was driving in the Eyewitness News Van, that blue van, driving down the street, and this was after the civil unrest in the city of Los Angeles. And I pulled next to the news van and said, Henry, I am so upset, so frustrated. He pulled the news van over, got the camera rolling. We had a broadcast that shattered a lot of the myths about law enforcement and was the outspoken critic of a political system which I thought failed the city. And Henry really put me on the map. At that point, it was, my political career took off. It really took off after that one short interview that led the newscast that afternoon. So, Henry, I've known you for many, many years, been a fan of yours for many, many years, and it's sad seeing you leaving, but one of your weather persons just left and came back out of retirement, Johnny Mountain. He left, now he's back at another station, Channel Two, so hopefully Henry can come back after he decides the retirement's not for him, because we love you in Los Angeles. You've been really a true professional eloquent reporter for all those many, many years with all you've done to help people, and you have been a mentor to many, many people. So, on behalf of me and my community in this entire city, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your newscast and all of the vision that you've had for this beautiful city. Henry Alfaro, Channel Seven Eyewitness News. Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Dennis. Someone embarrassed Henry a little bit here, but back when I was in Cathedral, we have all our portraits of all the graduates. And Henry Alfaro stands out as one of the major celebrities, alumni, influential folks of the Cathedral family. Coming from Lincoln Heights, where I was raised, in Lincoln Heights Cypress Park, it was a true inspiration to see someone from the neighborhoods that we grew up in to be as successful as Mr. Alfaro. And so it's with great honor to be here. Dennis beat me to the punch. I heard he was going to retire, and Dennis got it already, so great. I wanted to join Dennis in this honor. I want to thank Mr. Alfaro, not only for what he did for our city, but also what he continues to do for our young people. We keep talking about sixty-five percent of Latinos in the city do not graduate from high school. And here we have an individual who comes from the same neighborhoods, who graduated, succeeded, and is now, I believe, a role model and has been for many, many years. Thank you, Mr. Alfaro, on behalf of all the youth, all the role models that have been able to come before, and you have been an instrument of hope for all of us. Thank you, Mr. Alfaro.
Ms. Perry?
Henry, I just wanted to rise and say that as a journalism major and undergraduate School of Journalism at USC, and I also participated in all the journalism groups on campus, you know, you were really a great role model for all the students, and you always spoke with such credibility and veracity, and were able to put the reports in such human basic terms to which we could all understand and find a little bit of something in every one of your stories for all of us. And you've just been a tremendous role model and incredible career, and even though you're going into retirement, I hope that you'll continue to pursue the projects and issues that you love, because I think it would be a great loss to us not to ever see you on air again. So, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Alfaro, for all of your wonderful work. You've become an icon for the community of Los Angeles, speaking for everyone. Yet, at the same time, I just want to say thank you from somebody that you inspired. There were few people I could identify with throughout the city, people that I could look up to and people I could say, well, if he can do it, I can do it. You're one of those folks, and I know that you're just retiring. You're not going to go away, but I hope and pray that you actually make yourself as accessible as you have in the past to all of us and to the entire community. And I hope that you're able to get on the air and expose the kinds of issues that you've been doing for so many years, because very few people are taking on the issues that you're willing to take on. If you're willing to put Dennis Zine on the air at the moment's notice, you've got guts. And, and, and I mean that in jest toward Dennis, but that just goes to show what kind of gut you have for knowing when something needs to be talked about, when something needs to be exposed, when we, as the community, need to hear it. You're the kind of person that says, well, let's do it. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen enough, and you're that kind of voice. I hope that that voice continues elsewhere in the community of broadcasts, but I have a feeling that if you get a little too frustrated with a lack of follow-through with other folks, I think we're going to see you back in a bigger and brighter way, and I hope to see that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much. Was Dennis on his motorcycle when he pulled you over?
Yep.
That's good. Did he take his helmet off?
Yep.
He did. That's why, Dennis, you were smart. You knew your future calling. They wanted to see your big, beautiful smile. Henry Alfaro, Cathedral High School wouldn't be where it is today if you didn't lead the charge to fight to save it. And you really were. You're a graduate of Cathedral High, and you rallied the community, because it was a time when they were consolidating Catholic Boys High Schools throughout Southern California. And I remember your reports, and I remember how you rallied, and you informed everybody, and it really made a difference. And I know there's a guy to the right of you who's very pleased about that, who also shares that great history of that great school and that great fight, but you've done very many special things. I just feel so proud when you could stand up and talk about someone who's in the fourth, the fourth estate, so to speak, the media business that's supposed to inform the people. You always got to the core of things. You always fought hard to make sure the people really knew, and you cared about Los Angeles. You didn't just come into this quote market to try to make yourself look pretty and go to some other market. You cared about Los Angeles. So I just want to stand to salute Henry Alfaro. If you want to come back and fight, do so, but if you want to go out and just enjoy the sunset, do whatever you want to do, Henry, because you deserve it. You've worked very hard. And all your colleagues who, that original core, the Eyewitness News Team, who are very homegrown people, I salute you, and I think of you often when I pass Cathedral, because I know you were the first guy to really bring it to the public's attention, that maybe there's other schools that they could consolidate or relocate, but not Cathedral because of its great history. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, too, just want to congratulate you, Henry, for your years of success and being a role model for so many, as Mr. Cardenas said, not only a top-notch reporter. You did it much more than just report the news. You really brought meaning and significance to it, but also especially for your role in Vista LA. You weren't just hosting the show. You could tell it came from the heart. You saw many changes take place throughout the city for young people and old, and you made it very special for, for a lot of people. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those very, very kind words. I might add a little sidelike to Dennis Zine when I first met him. Yes, he was a motorcycle cop. We were going down Sixth Street. I was going to go do a story on Wiltshire and whatever other street it was, because that whole place had been burned down and just completely demolished. I know that it's politically correct to say civil unrest. That was a darn riot. That's what it was, and that's what I've always called it. And when Dennis said, I'd like to talk to you, I thought, well, maybe it'll be just a little bit more of the cop talk. But Dennis spoke from the heart with that same courage and enthusiasm and that, he was just, really, just full of fire. And even the people that were from Arco, I believe, were standing by, listening to him. At the end of the interview applauded him. I forgot the story I was going to do, and I said, I got a real story here. And when I went back and I put it together, they said, how long is it going to be? And I said, it's going to be about two minutes, fifteen seconds. Wrong. It was almost four minutes long. And I knew that the editors were going to get mad at me. I didn't really care, because this is the story, this is the other side of the story that Dennis portrayed and talked about with such compassion and, and passion, I should say. And as soon as he got through talking and talking about challenging, says, come on, you guys, we're not, and I liked that. I thought, that's my kind of guy. I'd never met this guy before, but when he, when he started talking about, come on, I said, he's all right. Anyway, as soon as he got through talking, that whole place lit, the, the, our switchboard lit up. And so ever since then, I've, Dennis and I have been friends. Ed, the common bond. I think you grew up at Cypress Park, which was a competing barrio. I grew up in Lincoln Heights, and I think you went to Divine Savior, and I went to Sacred Heart. But the thing was, the common bond was Cathedral, and that was the school where there were so many people from so many neighborhoods that came together, and we became one big powerful force. The school historically has always been the location, the teachers of the, of the poor. And there are literally thousands and thousands of Henry Alfaro's there, and it was certainly worth saving, and we did. And the last time I spoke before this podium was exactly at the time we were trying to make Cathedral High School. We already knew that, we set up a political barricade, and we made Cathedral High School historical landmark, and the city council voted it. It were the only two votes, and one of them, he, I forgot it, what was his name? And he was known as a kingfish, and he threatened me, and I loved it, because I knew we had him. And the other guy was a guy by the name of Bernardi, and, but we beat him. And I think God was on our side, you know, to save this great institution. Nevertheless, I spent many, many years here in this council chambers, and sometimes I didn't have the slightest idea what was going on. And it was a friend of mine from the LA Times, and I asked him one day, I says, you know, everybody's pressing buttons and yes and no, and it's been approved, and, and no matter how much attention. And I says, do you understand what's going on? He says, no, so.
Sometimes we don't understand.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you said that. Nevertheless, thank you very much. It's, when he mentioned that one of my colleagues left Channel Seven and went over to Two, there was a lot of questions about me going over to Channel Two. And I said, no, I'm not going to go to Channel Two. Maybe I'll run for office, but who knows? Maybe I'll run for office, but who knows?"
All right.
But nevertheless, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. You know, I love a good challenge, I love a good fight, but I think it's time to relax a little bit. But nevertheless, to Dennis and to Ed, I certainly want to thank you and all of the members of the city council who have made this possible. And again, you know, our city's growing, and when you see the battles between Democrats and Republicans, and it's just a matter of two individuals going at it without concern for the public, I think that really is demeaning, it's an insult to the American public, and it's going to hurt us in the end. So hopefully that, all things aside, when it comes to city council, and you're planning and working on the future and betterment of the city of Los Angeles, I hope you all speak as a united voice. Thank you very much for this honor. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, our Pioneer Woman of the Year awards. Mr. President. Mr. Mayor.
Members. Members, let me just say how blessed and honored I am and humbled to have received the support of the people of this city, to lead a city that's given me so much. You can't help but feel not just excitement, but a sense of humility about all of this. And I thank all of you, and as I've said to many people over the last few days, doesn't matter if you voted for me or not, I'm here to represent you. I understand that the role of the mayor and the leader is to unite us, and very honored to be in this position, and also obviously honored to be a part of this body. And so I don't have much to say other than thank you all so much, and very blessed.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. Back to Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is obviously a day of great celebration. Celebrated children, celebrated Henry Alfaro, celebrated our return of our mayor-elect Antonio Villarreal, and now we're going to celebrate women, pioneer women, and if it wasn't for women, we wouldn't be here. And we have 15 council members, we have 15 recipients, and joining me is going to be Leslie Ortig from the Board President of the Commission on Status of Women. There was a breakfast this morning at nine o'clock, and there were some ceremonies held upstairs in the Bradley Tower, but now it's time for Los Angeles to recognize the pioneer women for this year. Little bit information about the pioneer women. People wonder, what is the pioneer woman about? This is Women's History Month. The city council, in conjunction with the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women, honors 15 women who have made outstanding contributions to the strength, vitality, and enrichment of Los Angeles. Each woman is chosen by each representative district as their representative. Nominees can be women in the community from high school through retirement age. Pioneer Women Award was created in 1988 to recognize the accomplishment of women in the city of Los Angeles. Women chosen to receive the Pioneer Women Award meet two or more of the following criteria: live or work in the council district, made a significant contribution toward improving the community within the council district and/or the city in the area of education, business, sports, arts, science, community, health, government; contribution to improving the status of women in the city of Los Angeles; participation or excellence in non-traditional fields; involvement in philanthropic endeavors; and have performed acts of courage. Any two of those will be nominated in the selection process, and today we are going to be honoring the 15 women who have been chosen, pioneer women from the 15 council districts. But before I begin, I'm going to give Leslie the microphone, and then we will begin with the ceremony with the flowers, the accolades. Congratulations, Leslie.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. To Council Chair Padilla and council members, I am Commissioner Leslie Ortig, and I am president of the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women. It is indeed my pleasure and honor to present 15 outstanding women who exhibit the pride, the passion, and the spirit of service and commitment to their communities. These women embody the importance of grassroots involvement. They invest their volunteer time and their money to better their environments. And so it's not just about them, it's about what they do for their neighbors and their fellow man. And without further ado, the Commission on the Status of Women is proud to join the city council in celebrating their achievements. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Leslie. First recipient comes from Council District Number Three, and unfortunately, due to winning a trip, she's not here, but her daughter's here. And the first recipient's Gloria Pollak, and receiving flagoria. Sherry, come on up here. Sherry Jo, you just told me that. Domico. And I'm going to read a little information. Gloria's traveling in Mediterranean?
No, she's in the Caribbean.
In the Caribbean. She's in the Caribbean. While she's cruising through Devil's Triangle, we're here in city council honoring her. And she is a pioneer woman for going through Devil's Triangle on her trip to the Caribbean. Sherry Jo lives in Sherman Oaks. She's Gloria's only child. And I don't know if I'm going to say that. Should I say that? I'll say that. Happily divorced and no children.
Yet.
Yet. So obviously, it says it on the script, she wants me to say it. And I'll tell you where she works privately. It's a legitimate career. From 1992 to 1994, Gloria Pollak promoted and introduced the Cable in the Classroom program in New York. Gloria provided the school system in New York State employees with an awareness of the effective use of cable television in educating youth. In late 1994, Gloria brought this experience to Cable Vision Industries in Chatsworth, California, and took the cable in the classroom to the private and public schools. Gloria spends personal time reading to students in an after-school program. She has done reading for the blind and created a poster contest for the visually impaired at Noble Middle School. Gloria became involved with the Parent Teacher Student Association and learned how to provide critical viewing workshops to parents and teachers in the community, and has been providing workshops on a regular basis since 1995. Was asked to join the PTSA board and presently serves as one of its executive members. In 1996, Gloria was elevated to the position of Manager of Public Affairs, and in January 2000, became the Director of Public Affairs for Time Warner Communications. 1997, Gloria was selected as Woman to Watch by the Women in Cable and Telecommunications. 1999, awarded the Humanitarian Award by the Calabasas Rotary. September 2000, honored as being one of the seven finalists out of 110 women who make a difference in the city of Los Angeles. Gloria was named Volunteer of the Year 2004 by the San Fernando Business Journal. Gloria currently the president of the Fernando Foundation, president of the San Fernando Valley Symphony Orchestra, sits on the Board of the Valley Cultural Center, sits on the Board of One Generation, sits on the Board of Child Development Institute, sits on the Board of Walk of Hearts, sits on the Board of District 31 PTSA, sits on the Board of United Chamber of Commerce, co-chairs the notorious and famous Z Awards, also past president and treasurer of the foundation at Pierce College. For all of those accomplishments, activities in the community, it is my honor, and I'm sure we're going to get a tape of this for your mom, to see her recognized and honored today by the Los Angeles City Council, by Council District Three, as the Pioneer Woman of the Year. And obviously, you're following her footsteps, you're a pioneer in your own right, and I'm going to give you the microphone for a couple comments.
Number, I'd like to say thank you, number one, on behalf of my mom. Number two, she told me it was a luncheon, because she knows I never get up before nine o'clock. So, I am here, I am honored. There's no one I would rather accept an award for than my mom, Gloria Pollak. So, thank you very much.
Sherry Jo, thank you. And our next presentation could be made by Council President Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, familiar face to many of you. My selection for the 2005 Pioneer Woman of the Year from the Seventh Council District is Marianne Haverhill. As many of you know, Marianne is the Executive Director of MEND, an organization whose name is Meet Each Need with Dignity. And she's been the Executive Director now since 1987. And under her watch, under her leadership, the organization has grown from serving 2,000 families to now touching over 38,000 people on a monthly basis, serving the poorest of the poor in the San Fernando Valley, offering services such as emergency food and clothing, to English as a second language and computer training, excuse me, computer training, job training and job placement, and a variety of medical services, from medical to dental to vision services, which are so tough to provide for people without coverage or access to healthcare. Marianne has just been an angel for MEND since 1987. They're in their fourth capital campaign project now, because we're outgrowing our current facilities, and the success after success wouldn't be possible without her leadership, both for MEND and in the community. She serves on a number of boards, including the Valley Leadership Institute, on the Outreach Board for Providence Hospitals in the San Fernando Valley, many others, is a recipient of many awards, from the Los Angeles Times, to the Central City Association, to VICA, to the San Fernando Valley Business Journal. So for all she does for the community, we wanted to thank her and recognize her with this certificate and this beautiful bouquet of flowers. They match.
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla. We're just most honored to have you representing us, and thank you for nominating me and for all of your support of MEND through the years, way back, I understand, to your very first community service when you were a teenager. And I hate to think about it, but I think I was the Executive Director then, even then. So, I'm very, very honored on behalf of an organization and that I am thrilled to be a part of, and truly, it's the people of MEND, our 1,800 volunteers, our 18 staff, who make the organization what it is. It's really an honor to work side by side with all of them and with our council president. Thank you.
Mr. Zine will be coming forward to let us know who our next speaker will be.
We're going to go to the Eighth District, Councilmember Parks.
Bernard Parks.
And your recipient. And Doris. Okay, there you go.
Doris, come on up. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Zine. I'd like to bring up a living legend in our Eighth District. A member of Second Zion Missionary Baptist Church for over 30 years, an active member of the 48th Assembly District Democratic Committee, a delicate and elected secretary, active member of the 48th Assembly District Empowerment Congress, Education Committee, and Economic Development Committee, also active board member of Vermont Manchester Community Redevelopment Agency, past member of the Western Slauson CRA, also supporting member of the Community Coalition, active member, I think maybe one of the founding members of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress, also a member of the Standards Committee, also active member, original Eighth District Empowerment Congress Neighborhood Development Council, active member of the Empowerment Congress Southwest Neighborhood Council. She has done such a wonderful job in the Eighth District on so many issues that are relevant. Her work was the founding work on currently the neighborhood council system in the city of Los Angeles. And I think she's worked so much that it's also recently impacted her health, and we're just happy you're able to stay with us today. And I'd like to acknowledge her husband, Wendell, is here with her, but I'd like to say that the Eighth District Pioneer Woman is Dar Spates, and we just want to say thank you so much for everything you've done in the Eighth District, the 48th Assembly District, but we want to say most all, take care of your health so we can get more work out of you. Thank you.
All I wish to say for now is thank you very much.
Thank you.
There he is. I knew you were someplace. I know you're trying to get in shape, jogging around the council chambers is good for that.
That's right. It's Mexico.
Yes, it's Mexico. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, for taking me out of order. I'm going next door to present a resolution of thanks to Commissioner Ellen Stein, who's retiring today. So, I appreciate going out of order. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to present to the council Becky Leveque, my appointee this year, the Pioneer Woman. I had the pleasure of meeting Becky over, well, a long time ago, and I said this this morning, when I could tell how long ago, it was a long time ago. We had a crime problem in Porter Ranch, an area that had never had really crime problems before. And Becky Leveque was a good citizen there and very active in our Northridge Little League, but never been involved in community affairs before, and decided that it was time to get involved because of the crime problems that were occurring in Porter Ranch. She got involved with our Neighborhood Watch, very quickly became chairman of the Neighborhood Watch for 17A1 Porter Ranch, became a real leader in the area of crime. It was sooner or later recognized by Governor Wilson, who appointed her to attend a crime seminar in the state of California. Got very involved with LAPD Devonshire Division, where she headed up a group that became known as VST and helped formulate VST. The Volunteer Surveillance Team went on to be recognized by Newsweek magazine as one of the finest crime-fighting organizations in America, and also recognized by the FBI for what they have done. In the time of the existence of the VST program, the citizens of Devonshire Division, and Becky was one of those founding citizens, have arrested thousands and thousands of people who have been committing crimes in the general North Valley area. And it's been truly a program that's been emulated all over the United States of America now, and Becky was one of the founding members. We also have someone here also I want to introduce, Yolanda Petrowski, who was one of the founders of that as well, and a former Pioneer Woman of the Year. Besides that, then Becky decided she'd also help Devonshire Division as a whole in another way. We came up with an idea that we needed to raise money to support the police department. In the early 90s, LAPD was really lacking of resources and money, and so we put together a citizens group, which became known as Supporters of Law Enforcement in Devonshire, or SOLID, which went out and raised now $100,000 for LAPD Devonshire Division, have bought dozens of computers for the police department, new chairs, refurbished part of the police station, and has been a great asset to the Devonshire area in particular. And we've... And we're very proud of that award. And so, she's been a real leader in the community. To top it off, she just couldn't quit. She was just elected a couple weeks ago as President of the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council. So, I don't know how she has a life. I think she works harder than I do. And she said, "My poor husband, Dave Leveque, is here also." Dave, thank you for being here. Good supportive of community activities, and now Mr. Becky Leveque, rather than Dave Leveque. But she's a great asset to the community, we're very proud of her. I told a story this morning, there's a bunch of the ladies asking me to relay it to you again. When we started the VST program, one of the first things we did is we went out to combat graffiti activity that was going on on the 118 freeway from Chatsworth to Silmar, and it was being hit on a regular basis. And so, we brought our new VST program out there, we put them up on the bushes over the 118 freeway with their binoculars, and they're sitting out there at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, dozens of them, ready to get these graffiti vandals, we're hitting the area, and we had LAPD all queued up down the street, ready to arrest anyone that showed up, and Becky was out there with all of them, and nobody bothered to check, but about 1:00 in the morning, 12:00, C, the Caltrans turns on the watering system on the freeways. And so, 25 of our volunteers were running out of the bushes down the freeway to avoid being splashed by the water. But we did catch, I think, 13 vandals that night. It's a great success.
$250,000 worth of damage they did.
And $250,000 of damage was stopped that they had done previously. So, I'm very honored to have my recipient here today, Becky Leveque, a very dear friend of mine and a great representative of the Women of the 12th District. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Couldn't have done it without you. I want to thank Councilman Smith for everything that he said. It's just been an incredible experience, and I remember when I first started, I said, I kept asking myself, I have these three little boys following me, and, you know, a full-time job, which I still have for Dr. Baller, and I'm saying, you know, why me? Why me? Well, then all of a sudden, this boy said, "Why not me?" And when I ran for the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council, people said, "Well, how can you do a good job? You're doing so many things." And I said, "When it's important enough, you find the time. No matter how busy you are, you find the time to do it if it makes a difference." And I'd also like to thank my husband, and there's an old saying that goes behind every great man is a great woman, and I'd like to say, behind his example that he set with all of his volunteer work and all of the people's lives that he's touched, behind every great woman is a great man asking her, "Honey, when you're finished, what's done, what's coming for dinner?" Thank you, Dave. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Back to Mr. Zein. If we can have the camera pan on Dave, he's too shy to come up here. We're going to embarrass you, Dave. Come on, that's it. There you go. Can we get the camera on him? Dave, thank you, congratulations. Our next recipient from the Fourth District, Councilmember Tom LaBange. Pardon me?
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Zein. Give Mr. Zein a hand for help coordinating this here. Thank you, Dennis. Kay Song is my Great Woman Award winner. Sometimes with pioneers, we think of the old days, but you're New Day Modern, and you're very special. I say, "Come Sami Da." The Associate Vice President of USC Civic and Community Relations, responsible for bringing the community to be involved, the USC community to be involved with the university. But for those Bruins who are in the House here, she received her Doctorate of Social Welfare at UCLA. There's a couple Bruins right there. Dr. Song fostered a close relationship between USC and the local community, which has greatly improved the physical development in and around the University of Southern California campus. Her efforts have spawned the development of urban policies and strategies and planning process to address the challenges for the community and encourage increased community participation. Dr. Song is acclaimed author and columnist, both in Korea and here in Los Angeles. She's also on the very important Korean Historic Museum, where we're working with to place at Sixth and Vermont, with the great help of Councilmember Martin Lenlo, so we're very encouraged about that. Her shining achievements came when she was awarded the New Millennium Leadership Award from the Los Angeles Chapter of the NAACP at the Freedom Fund Award Ceremony in 2000. She truly is a remarkable person. I'm so proud of her because she lives in my district, and I'm so proud of her, she has the wings of an angel as she helps people in this community to connect to the university, which is a great university, and interplay with the Korean community, as well as her regular role with all those assignments. Dr. Kay Song, please welcome the outstanding Great Woman Award for Los Angeles 2005. We'll hold this up in just a second.
Thank you so much. What a wonderful introduction, and I really appreciate, I'm extremely honored, and also my colleague at USC is very happy because this is an acknowledgement of USC, it's a dedication with the community. We have a thousand students out there, work with our neighborhood school. I'm glad to see so many young people here today, that Korean-Americans celebrating the 100th year immigration history, and education is a key to success, and that's the fastest way you can accomplish American dream. And thank you so much.
Kay, before you get away, we have a great presentation of beautiful flowers for you to enjoy for the rest of the day and the weekend. Congratulations. Come Sami Da. Go Trojans.
Okay, thank you. And Bruins.
And Bruins.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBange.
And rolling right along, Pioneer Women, from the 11th District, Councilmember Cindy Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Zein, Mr. President. Members, as we hear the incredible work being done by the women, each one of them in every council district, I really appreciated what Greg Smith's appointee said, because each one of these women does tasks of about 12 women, 12 people. And I think there is another old saying, "When you have something to get done, ask a busy person," because that person knows how to be efficient, knows how to use their time, and that clearly exemplifies my nominee, Gwen Vuces. Then Gwen is from the Westchester community in the 11th District, and she too has, just knows no bounds in terms of what she has been able to do. Among her past activities and current activities, she was a founding member and the first civilian co-chair of the Community Police Advisory Board. As you know, most of the Community Police Advisory Boards have been chaired by a captain or a uniformed officer. Gwen, early on in the Pacific Division, was the co-chair of that. She is past President of the Westchester LAX Marina Del Rey Chamber of Commerce. She is past President of the Westchester Rotary. And of course, when the Westchester Neighborhood Council got created, not only was Gwen active in helping that get up and running, she has been elected and has been the only serving President of the Westchester Neighborhood Council through a number of different elections and re-elections. And that's because her peers in that community of Westchester know her not only as a person determined to get things done, but as a person who's fair, a person who's open, a person who considers all inputs, really encourages the kind of stakeholding activity that we know our Neighborhood Councils should do. In her spare time, she is on the Board of the Marina, Airport Marina Counseling Service. This is a, an entity that helps provide mental health, particularly for those who may not be able to pay high fees and high, for that kind of service to provide, to get that assistance. She's on the Board of the Westchester YMCA. She continues to serve on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and last year, when the mayor talked about our stakeholders on the budget, as to how we should do priority-based budgeting, and pulled together on a vast array of people, Gwen was one of those people to work with how we should do a city budget better focused on neighborhood services and having understanding in the neighborhood. There isn't really anything in the Westchester community that she hasn't touched, from the Little League, being a Little League mom, to then running the Little League, to an incredible 4th of July picnic, and I know that Ms. Han, who's a former Westchester resident, knows that 4th of July picnic. It's really old-fashioned, oom pa pa, really grand neighborhood activity. And that's really what Gwen epitomizes. In the meantime, she does run a business with her husband Jim, who is here, a security services business, which offers a lot of protection, literally, for the Westchester neighborhood in addition to what the police provide. So, it was very, very easy for me to choose as Pioneer Woman Gwen Vuces, who in that community of Westchester is the go-to person, bar none. Things need to get done there, this is the first call you make. And so, it was the first call I made to ask her if she would be willing to be the nominee as Pioneer Woman. Gwen, thank you.
I want to thank Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski for giving me this honor, and I want to say here on behalf, in front of the City Council, I'm sad. It has been a real pleasure to work with Cindy and her staff. They are wonderful, her staff is superior, and we have to get ready for a little new era here, change, and, but anyway, I want to thank everyone for being honored, and these people standing behind me. She mentioned my husband and I run a business. People say, "You really do work?" And I said, "Yes, we do. We have a business, we go to every day." This is my staff, some of my office assistants. This blonde right here, it's her birthday, and she's my personal assistant, Jill. They came down here to support this honor, and they put up with an awful lot in my office regarding community issues. So, I want to thank my staff from CECO and my husband, standing right over there, who supports all of my craziness with these things that I do. So, thank you very much, it was my pleasure to be here today and be recognized by the city of Los Angeles.
While we are waiting on that, I know that Mr. Weiss would like to give a quick introduction of some special guests that we have in chambers this morning.
We have some special guests here, guys. This is your cue to stand up, don't cheer yet. Stand up, Wildwood School. All right, guys, we have with us today the great third grade class from Wildwood School. Their teachers are Joan Rosen, Cookie Salon, Sandy Crozier, Melanie Benefil, and a voucher, they're here for a tour of City Hall and other city facilities, and I just want to say that my friend Camille Pass is here with them. So, let's hear it, Wildwood School. Come on, cheer, guys. All right, Wildwood. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
You know, Mr. Weiss, I want to point out, I think there's a future council member there in a suit. He's wearing a suit, young man. Don't be shy. Let's hear it for you. You're wearing your suit today to council. Thank you. I thought that was great. Future council member. Our next recipient is going to be presented by Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Zein, and hopefully the kids from Wildwood know you can watch yourself tonight at 7:30 on Channel 35, and it replays on Sunday, so you'll be able to see your picture. Well, colleagues, I am so glad and honored to introduce my Pioneer of the Year Award. She is not unfamiliar to my colleagues, Tony Cardenas and Alex Padilla, because a lot of her work covers the entire northeast San Fernando Valley. I want to tell you just a little bit about what Sue Bartlet does. Amongst her many accomplishments and skills, she does drive a truck, like I do, yes, to pick up things in our communities. Sue Bartlet is a dedicated Sun Valley community member who gives countless hours to make Los Angeles a better place in which to live, work, and play. Sue began working with graffiti busters, Sun Valley graffiti busters, in 1988, and now serves as the lead supervisor. The Sun Valley graffiti busters improves the quality of life for Valley residents to working with youth and court-ordered volunteers to paint out graffiti and remove bulky items and trash from neighborhoods throughout Sun Valley, Shadow Hills, Latuna Canyon, Lake Futerus, Sunland, and Tahunga, and many other places. But she always goes above and beyond the call of duty. She's always out there. She's a tireless volunteer and works with her volunteer staff to paint out graffiti as fast as it appears. The Foothill Division of the Los Angeles Police Department, I think, feels she's an honorary member of the Los Angeles Police Department and is a great supporter of Sue and the work that she does. Along with her activities at Sun Valley graffiti busters, and the Sun Valley Chamber, and the Sun Valley Neighborhood Council, she is a regular participant at community events where the removal of graffiti and trash is a topic. She assisted recently Council District Two with our bulky item pickup that took place on a Saturday in March. She brought her own truck, drove around the community, and told some of us where places of other abandoned vehicles, other couches were. She really is, I think, the epitome of someone who cares about her neighborhood. She's been active advocate and mentor for youth for many years. In the 1980s, she worked with at-risk youth, serving as a mentor, and until 2000, she served as the program coordinator for the kids program, Keep Youth Doing Something, working to find job referrals and placement for youth. She's lived in Council District Two since 1973, and as mentioned, is an extraordinary community member. She's been a member of the CPAB for over 10 years. So, I'm so pleased to present to you a woman who really walks the walk. She's out there every single day, whether it's a day she's working or a day she's just driving in her community, making it a better place to live. And I am so proud that she's a resident and someone who is going to continue to make a difference in our communities. Let's give Sue Bartlet a great round of applause.
I want to say thank you to Wendy, and that I'm truly humbled in being involved with a group of so many truly busy, important, and concerned women. Thank you.
It'll go back and take a picture, okay?
Congratulations, and now Janice Hahn, Councilmember Janice Hahn. And it's going to be a beautiful day with Betty Day.
I know. Thank you, and I'm very pleased to have chosen Betty Day as my 2005 Pioneer Woman. So much to say about Betty, but I will say that her friends and her close associates and everyone who knows her, they describe her as dramatic, optimistic, wise, and no nonsense. She was born February 2nd, 1940, and Betty Fay Floyd's family migrated from Kilgore, Texas, to Watts shortly after her birth, where she attended 92nd Street Elementary and then Jordan High. Betty describes her youth as a time of, quote, "being headstrong and having fun. Not much has changed." She chose to marry, becoming Mrs. Arthur Day while still in her teens, and went on to raise eight children. Her love for young people has been her inspiration over the years, and as she served as a community activist in Watts. In fact, just everywhere you go in Watts, you'll run into someone that credits Betty with giving them their first job. Just two Saturdays, I was in Watts, and my colleague from Edison, Ed Robinson, from the church right across the street, came over and said that you had given him his first job. In 1966, she joined the Los Angeles Unified School District as an educational aide, and later served as a Pupils Service Agency Counselor, retiring after 23 years in 1989. You know, and along the way, I think what everyone loves about her is that Betty made herself available to mother homeless children, and she's always been affectionately known as Mother Day. And some of her greatest accomplishments in Watts, Betty was the strongest advocate on Grape Street for one of our pocket parks that we build in the city of Los Angeles. It was a vacant abandoned lot across the street from her house, and she pushed me and the mayor's office, and now we have a beautiful, beautiful park. Recreation and parks keeps the flowers looking good, there's benches there, there's playground equipment, and she says regularly, the seniors along Grape Street love to spend time in that park, and I think this summer it's going to be a lovely place to have a respite, and that's because of you. She was a founding member of our Watts Neighborhood Council, she's a member of the Watts Neighborhood Watch, and she really has touched the lives of thousands in the Watts community. I'm happy to call her my friend, and, you know, the other thing I love about Betty is that no matter what is going on in our lives, no matter what the issue is, no matter what the current problem is, no matter what fight we're fighting, Betty believes you need to be fed. And I can't tell you the times she has dragged me by the hand into her home on Grape Street and fed me the... and fed me the best brisket that anyone will ever eat in their lives, and even always sends me some home because she knows I don't cook for my son. So even my son said, "What did Betty make for dinner?" So congratulations, Betty. You are a real bright spot. You are a beacon, you are a shining star, and I have gathered so much personal strength and inspiration on the days when I was a little bit weary. So congratulations. Here's your flowers. You can say something.
Good morning, everybody. It's truly been a nice experience this morning. And I'm out there in Watts with my children. They keep me going. She keeps me going. And Myra Cotton, remember this cotton?
Come on, Myron.
If it wasn't for these two, I wouldn't have came this morning because I'd said I wasn't coming to this. But I came anyway.
Thank you.
Now see how this is being run. So I will be back again.
That's good.
And like I tell Janice, keep the faith because we're going to be back. And I want to thank Myra Cotton. And I want to thank my children here. These are really not my children, but they are my children. I've been with them since they were about five. Oh, he's hiding. I got one back there that's hiding. This is my daughter and my son-in-law. These are the children that I helped raise, and my little baby, Heary, over here is I calling. These children worked with us during the election. They worked every day, night and day. It was something for them to do. Even now, since it's over, they're still there. And I think if we just all say what we're going to, stop saying what we're going to do, let's do it.
That's right.
Because I really don't see that much being done.
That's right.
After being here today, you have a lot to do.
Yes, we do.
This is not a playground. So I think that some of you should go back home tonight and think about what you're doing. Maybe I shouldn't say this, but it needs to be said because I don't work for any of you. I work for myself, and I'm going to leave it this word, keep the faith, Janice, because always remember one thing, you're by yourself. But all of you, you've got some work to do with yourselves. And I am a no-nonsense person. I'm very firm in what I do. But you will be hearing from us out there in Watts, these are the people you have to help. There's others out there that nobody thinks about. You say, "I'm going to go out there and help them," but you never come. I'm going to leave that to you while you're graduating, everybody else. Have a good day.
Ooh, thank you, Betty. Let's take a picture. Take a picture with Betty.
Councilmember Garcetti, from the 13th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you, Madam President. It gives me great joy to be able to present my Pioneer Woman from the 13th District, our Pioneer Woman from the 13th Council District, Joslyn Hiago Rosenthal. Please give her a round of applause. Joslyn is somebody in the 13th District who really needs no introduction, but let me introduce her to the rest of the city for her amazing work. She's been an instrumental part of the work of Council District 13 long before I was council member there, and the Los Angeles community for so many years. As with so many of the Pioneer Women that are here today, Joslyn wears many different hats, so let me share a few of the hats that are in her closet. Joslyn's day job is with the County of Los Angeles Department of Child and Family Services as Program Manager for the countywide implementation of family group decision-making. When she comes home at night, though, she is probably the most active resident of her neighborhood. She was one of the key community members who organized the campaign known very well around this horseshoe to recognize and designate area around Temple Beverly as Historic Filipino Town. She's also one of the founding members of the now Historic Filipino Town Improvement Association, which does cleanups, which is looking at street scape improvements, which is the first resident association in that area in its history. She's also the Chair of the Temple Westlake Neighborhood Development Corporation. It's a nonprofit organization that developed and constructed the Manila Terrace Apartments, which was a $5 million low-cost housing complex right in the heart of Historic Filipino Town, and now manages and operates the complex and provides social services to the communities. As if that wasn't enough, she's also on the Board of the Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council and on the Board of the Filipino-American Heritage Institute. She's also a CD-13 Untagged Block Captain, the uniting neighborhoods to abolish graffiti initiative, which we just passed last week to go citywide. As a part of the anti-graffiti program, she regularly calls in, paint outs and cleanups for the area, and we can always count on her to make sure that the area is looking as beautiful as it can. And finally, Joslyn owns and runs a community art space known as Remi's on Temple in honor of her mother, and it's a really special space right there in the heart of Historic Filipino Town, bringing together artists and community members and revitalizing that incredible Main Street of hi-fi. She is a tireless worker and an organizer in her community. She dedicates her life to the service of others and asks for nothing in return except our own participation as well. CD-13 and the entire City of Los Angeles are greatly indebted to her, so I'd like to congratulate her, give her these beautiful flowers.
Well, good morning again, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to our meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 24th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now nearly 10:25 a.m. and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for today. Let me recognize Mr. Reyes to first lead us in our pledge of allegiance and then to conduct the first presentation. If you will all please rise for our flag salute.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance... ...to the Republic... ...of America... ...in this world... ...liberty and justice for all. Good morning, Mademoiselles, council colleagues, members... ...all visitors of City Hall. It's a pleasure to introduce to you a gentleman, Paul Little. Paul Little graduated from Loyola University in New Orleans with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science, pursued his Masters in Communication from the University of Texas at Austin. Paul Little is married to Laurie Bowman Little, a Los Angeles Public High School English teacher. He has the parents of two children, Cameron and Courtney. Paul Little is Communications Director for a college in Claremont and was formerly Director of Communications of the Pacific Asia Museum in Pasadena. Prior to accepting that position, Mr. Little worked in the entertainment industry, beginning as a production assistant and eventually promoted to a production and development executive position. And Paul Little is a founding Director of the Bungalow Heaven Neighbor Association Pasadena and served on the Board from 1989 to 1995. He has served as a member of the Board and Treasurer of the Pasadena Community Access Corporation, as well as the Northlake Avenue Specific Plan Working Group and other city task forces and committees. In 1995, Paul Little was elected to the Pasadena City Council representing District 2. He was re-elected in 1999 and 2003. Mr. Little serves as Chair of the City Council's Finance Committee and is a member of the Economic Development and Technology Committee. He is also Chair, or former Chair, of the Los Angeles to Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority, now known as the GO Line, which is charged with building the $700 million light rail line to Pasadena. He also chairs the Project D A Y Policy Board. Colleagues, I invited Mr. Little to join me today because he has stepped down as a Director of the Joint Powers Authority of the Blue Line, which is now known as the GO Line. And I wanted to honor him for his work for many years, for the past almost, I guess, 10 years almost. We've been working together, first myself as a staff person, then as a Director of the JPA. And I can share with you, colleagues, that with Paul's support, his guidance, his negotiating skills, together we were able, along with the other Directors, to build the GO Line on time and with actual savings in our total project budget. But I thought it was important to share with you that without his work, without his diligence, without his diplomacy, many of the challenges that we went through in building a state-of-the-art light rail line through a very complicated and difficult process, not only through the city of Los Angeles, but through South Pasadena, through Pasadena, and now we're working on the Phase 2 that could take us out to Claremont. With Paul's support, we've been able to achieve these goals. So with that, I wanted to acknowledge him and thank him for his hard work. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, he has added to the regional network, has helped promote transit-oriented districts, smart growth, helped address the congestion issues, rebuilt some of the historic communities in Los Angeles, as well as improve the pathway into San Gabriel Valley. So it gives me great honor and pleasure to grant this resolution acknowledging Paul Little's great work. Let's give him a round of applause, please. If I may, Councilman, I'd like to ask him to share a few words with us.
First, I want to thank you, Ed, and thank you all for this honor. I'm very privileged to be here and really appreciate your recognition. It's been six years, I guess, since I've been working on the Board, first with Mr. Hernandez representing District 1 in the L.A. City Council, and the City of L.A., and now Mr. Reyes. And it has been a great pleasure to do that. I feel privileged to have worked with everyone and to have been part of a team that included actually some very gifted and talented staff members from the City of Los Angeles, Mr. Miller especially, who taught me a lot, along with Mr. Hernandez and now Mr. Reyes. Being from a little town, a little north of here, there is actually a lot that I had to learn about the City of Los Angeles and the neighborhoods in Los Angeles and the concerns of Los Angeles. And I'm very pleased to have been able to work with Mr. Reyes and have him help me along in my education. And I'm very glad that together we were able to accomplish something that is very much a benefit to the region, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Los Angeles. And thank you again for your recognition. And thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining me is going to be Margaret Maggie Whelan, General Manager of Personnel. And we look around this room this morning and wonder why there's so many people here. They're here because they do a great job for the City of Los Angeles, and we're here to acknowledge them because this is Career Service Awards Day, year 2004. It gives me great pleasure to once again participate in Career Service Awards ceremony. This year, we are honoring 14 individual city employees for their exemplary service to the City of Los Angeles. Present here with me is the General Manager of Personnel Department, Maggie Whelan. She's going to assist me in presenting the awards. The first individuals are being recognized for demonstrating outstanding dedication to duty or outstanding leadership qualities. As I call your name, please come forward to accept your award. And anyone who's here with you, please come forward with the recipients, any family members or coworkers. Claudia Culling, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Office of the City Attorney, Airport Branch, Los Angeles World Airport. Claudia and I go way back to the Charter Commission. Remember that? Those two years of creating a new charter, a lot of fun. Claudia Culling, outstanding service and dedication in her role as Lead City Attorney was pivotal in the final development and approval of the LAX Master Plan. She demonstrated her solid commitment and applied her extensive... ...strengths... ...in the fight... ...for the city of America... ...in this world... ...liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mademoiselles, council colleagues, members... ...all visitors of City Hall. It's a pleasure to introduce to you a gentleman, Paul Little. Paul Little graduated from Loyola University in New Orleans with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science, pursued his Masters in Communication from the University of Texas at Austin. Paul Little is married to Laurie Bowman Little, a Los Angeles Public High School English teacher. He has the parents of two children, Cameron and Courtney. Paul Little is Communications Director for a college in Claremont and was formerly Director of Communications of the Pacific Asia Museum in Pasadena. Prior to accepting that position, Mr. Little worked in the entertainment industry, beginning as a production assistant and eventually promoted to a production and development executive position. And Paul Little is a founding Director of the Bungalow Heaven Neighbor Association Pasadena and served on the Board from 1989 to 1995. He has served as a member of the Board and Treasurer of the Pasadena Community Access Corporation, as well as the Northlake Avenue Specific Plan Working Group and other city task forces and committees. In 1995, Paul Little was elected to the Pasadena City Council representing District 2. He was re-elected in 1999 and 2003. Mr. Little serves as Chair of the City Council's Finance Committee and is a member of the Economic Development and Technology Committee. He's also Chair, or former Chair, of the Los Angeles to Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority, now known as the GO Line, which is charged with building the $700 million light rail line to Pasadena. He also chairs the Project D A Y Policy Board. Colleagues, I invited Mr. Little to join me today because he has stepped down as a Director of the Joint Powers Authority of the Blue Line, which is now known as the GO Line. And I wanted to honor him for his work for many years, for the past almost, I guess, 10 years almost. We've been working together, first myself as a staff person, then as a Director of the JPA. And I can share with you, colleagues, that with Paul's support, his guidance, his negotiating skills, together we were able, along with the other Directors, to build the GO Line on time and with actual savings in our total project budget. But I thought it was important to share with you that without his work, without his diligence, without his diplomacy, many of the challenges that we went through in building a state-of-the-art light rail line through a very complicated and difficult process, not only through the city of Los Angeles, but through South Pasadena, through Pasadena, and now we're working on the Phase 2 that could take us out to Claremont. With Paul's support, we've been able to achieve these goals. So with that, I wanted to acknowledge him and thank him for his hard work. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, he has added to the regional network, has helped promote transit-oriented districts, smart growth, helped address the congestion issues, rebuilt some of the historic communities in Los Angeles, as well as improve the pathway into San Gabriel Valley. So it gives me great honor and pleasure to grant this resolution acknowledging Paul Little's great work. Let's give him a round of applause, please. If I may, Councilman, I'd like to ask him to share a few words with us.
First, I want to thank you, Ed, and thank you all for this honor. I'm very privileged to be here and really appreciate your recognition. It's been six years, I guess, since I've been working on the Board, first with Mr. Hernandez representing District 1 in the L.A. City Council, and the City of L.A., and now Mr. Reyes. And it has been a great pleasure to do that. I feel privileged to have worked with everyone and to have been part of a team that included actually some very gifted and talented staff members from the City of Los Angeles, Mr. Miller especially, who taught me a lot, along with Mr. Hernandez and now Mr. Reyes. Being from a little town, a little north of here, there is actually a lot that I had to learn about the City of Los Angeles and the neighborhoods in Los Angeles and the concerns of Los Angeles. And I'm very pleased to have been able to work with Mr. Reyes and have him help me along in my education. And I'm very glad that together we were able to accomplish something that is very much a benefit to the region, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Los Angeles. And thank you again for your recognition. And thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining me is going to be Margaret Maggie Whelan, General Manager of Personnel. And we look around this room this morning and wonder why there's so many people here. They're here because they do a great job for the City of Los Angeles, and we're here to acknowledge them because this is Career Service Awards Day, year 2004. It gives me great pleasure to once again participate in Career Service Awards Ceremony. This year, we are honoring 14 individual city employees for their exemplary service to the City of Los Angeles. Present here with me is the General Manager of Personnel Department, Maggie Whelan. She's going to assist me in presenting the awards. The first individuals are being recognized for demonstrating outstanding dedication to duty or outstanding leadership qualities. As I call your name, please come forward to accept your award. And anyone who's here with you, please come forward with the recipients, any family members or coworkers. Claudia Culling, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Office of the City Attorney, Airport Branch, Los Angeles World Airport. Claudia and I go way back to the Charter Commission. Remember that? Those two years of creating a new charter, a lot of fun. Claudia Culling, outstanding service and dedication in her role as Lead City Attorney was pivotal in the final development and approval of the LAX Master Plan. She demonstrated her solid commitment and applied her extensive...
Well, good morning again, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to council chambers, and welcome to our meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 24th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Uh, colleagues, the time is now, uh, nearly 10:25 a.m., and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum, but we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for today. Let me recognize Mr. Reyes to, uh, first lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and then to conduct the first presentation. If you will all please rise for our flag salute. Please put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. Pledge allegiance...
To the republic...
Liberty and justice for all. Good morning, Mademoiselles, council colleagues, members, all visitors of City Hall. It's a pleasure to introduce to you a gentleman, Paul Little. Paul Little graduated from Loyola University in New Orleans with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science, pursued his Masters in Communication from the University of Texas at Austin. Paul Little is married to Laurie Bowman-Little, a Los Angeles Public High School English teacher. They are the parents of two children, Cameron and Courtney. Paul Little is Communications Director for a college in Claremont, and was formerly Director of Communications of the Pacific Asia Museum in Pasadena. Prior to accepting that position, Mr. Little worked in the entertainment industry, beginning as a production assistant, and eventually promoted to a production and development executive position. And Paul Little is a founding director of the Bungalow Heaven Neighbored Association Pasadena, and served on the Board from 1989 to 1995. He has served as a member of the Board and Treasurer of the Pasadena Community Access Corporation, as well as the Northlake Avenue Specific Plan Working Group, and other city task forces and committees. In 1995, Paul Little was elected to the Pasadena City Council, representing District 2. He was re-elected in 1999 and 2003. Mr. Little serves as Chair of the City Council's Finance Committee, and is a member of the Economic Development and Technology Committee. He's also Chair, or former Chair, of the Los Angeles to Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority, now known as the GO line, which is charged with building the $700 million light rail line to Pasadena. He also chairs the Project D A Y Policy Board. Colleagues, I invited Mr. Little to join me today because he has stepped down as a Director of the Joint Powers Authority of the Blue Line, which is now known as the GO line. And I wanted to honor him for his work. For many years, for the past almost, I guess, 10 years almost, we've been working together, first myself as a staff person, then as a Director of the JPA. And I can share with you, colleagues, that with Paul's support, his guidance, his negotiating skills, together, we were able, along with the other Directors, to build the GO line on time, and with actual savings in our total project budget. But I thought it was important to share with you that, without his work, without his diligence, without his diplomacy, many of the challenges that we went through in building a state-of-the-art light rail line, through a very complicated and difficult process, not only through the city of Los Angeles, but through South Pasadena, through Pasadena, and now we're working on the Phase 2 that could take us out to Claremont. With Paul's support, we've been able to achieve these goals. So that, I wanted to acknowledge him, and thank him for his hard work. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, he has added to the regional network, has helped promote transit-oriented districts, smart growth, helped address the congestion issues, rebuilt some of the historic communities in Los Angeles, as well as improve the pathway into San Gabriel Valley. So, it gives me great honor and pleasure to grant this resolution, acknowledging Paul Little's great work. Let's give him a round of applause, please. If I may, Councilman, I'd like to ask him to share a few words with us.
First, I want to, um, uh, thank you, Ed, and thank you all, um, for this honor. I'm, uh, I'm very privileged to be here, and really appreciate your recognition. Um, it's, it's been, uh, six years, I guess, since I've been working on the Board. First with Mr. Hernandez representing District 1 in the L.A. City Council, and the City of L.A., and now Mr. Reyes. And it has been, um, a great pleasure to do that. I, I feel privileged to have, have worked with, with everyone, and to have been part of a team, uh, that included actually some very gifted, uh, and talented staff members from the City of Los Angeles, Mr. Miller especially, um, uh, who, uh, who taught me a lot, along with Mr. Hernandez and now Mr. Reyes. Being from a little town, a little north of here, um, uh, there is actually a lot that, uh, that I had to learn about, about the City of Los Angeles, and the neighborhoods in Los Angeles, and the concerns of Los Angeles. And I'm very, uh, very pleased to have been able to work with, uh, with Mr. Reyes, and, and have him help me along in my, uh, my education. And I'm, uh, I'm, I'm very glad that together we were able to accomplish something, um, that is, uh, very much a benefit to the region, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Los Angeles. And thank you again for your recognition, and thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining me is going to be Margaret Maggie Whelan, General Manager of Personnel. And we look around this room this morning, and wonder why there's so many people here. They're here because they do a great job for the City of Los Angeles, and we're here to acknowledge them because this is Career Service Awards Day, year 2004. It gives me great pleasure to once again participate in Career Service Awards Ceremony. This year, we are honoring 14 individual city employees for their exemplary service to the City of Los Angeles. Present here with me is the General Manager of Personnel Department, Maggie Whelan. She's going to assist me in presenting the awards. The first individuals are being recognized for demonstrating outstanding dedication to duty, or outstanding leadership qualities. As I call your name, please come forward to accept your award. And anyone who's here with you, please come forward with the recipients, any family members or coworkers. Claudia Culling, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Office of the City Attorney, Airport Branch, Los Angeles World Airport. Claudia and I go way back to the Charter Commission. Remember that? Those two years of, uh, creating a new charter, a lot of fun. Claudia Cunning, outstanding service and dedication in her role as Lead City Attorney, was pivotal in the final development and approval of the LAX Master Plan. She demonstrated her solid commitment, and applied her extensive knowledge of the elements and provisions of city rules, regulations, and codes to progress the LAX Master Plan. The LAX Master Plan program will serve as the strategic framework for a long-term development of LAX, bringing about the first comprehensive improvements since 1956. The program will ensure that LAX continues to be a safe, secure, and viable international airport, serving more than 60 million passengers and 2 million tons of cargo per year. The recipient, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Claudia Cunning. Here we go. And you're going to say, in addition to thank you, what else? You know, come on, say something, Claudia, come on, come on.
You know I'm a woman of few words.
You're a woman of few words and a lot of action. So she's going to say thank you, a woman of few words and a lot of action. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Our next recipient, William K. Flowers, Airport Maintenance Supervisor 3, Construction and Maintenance Division, Los Angeles World Airports. There we go, we got some family folks here. In his 20-year career, William K. Flowers has earned the respect of managers, peers, and subordinates through his dedication to duty and outstanding leadership qualities. He has repeatedly received promotions to higher levels of responsibility, with the most recent being Airport Maintenance Supervisor 3. William has played, and continues to play, a pivotal role in bringing in-house custodial service back to Tom Bradley International Terminal. With a one-day notice from a contractor that they would discontinue service, within a 24-hour period, Mr. Flowers was instrumental in the successful transition of 50 contract employees to city employees, thereby avoiding disruption of custodial services to Terminal 5. He also transitioned employees from Terminals 1 and 2. Through his hard work, Mr. Flowers has proven to be a great example of dedication to duty to keep that airport looking good. It's all yours.
I would like to thank all the people who support me, and who believe in me, to the Managers at LAX, to my family. Thank you very much. This is a great pleasure and an honor to receive this award.
Don't be shy, don't be shy. You think we have 40,000 city employees, and to receive this award is really an honor to be selected to this prestigious award. Elizabeth Betsy Hoag, Principal Librarian 2, Branch Librarian Services, Library Department. Come on down, folks, don't be shy, come on down. Betsy, not Elizabeth, Betsy. I know, that's what I was told, you're Betsy. Betsy's career with the city spans more than 35 years. During that time, she has served in several capacities within the Library Department. Currently, she serves as the Assistant Director of Branch Library Services, where she oversees the operation of the city's 71 branch libraries. Her remarkable accomplishments have set the standard, not only for other city employees, but also for librarians across the nation. Her most notable achievement involves playing a key role in the Los Angeles Public Library Branch's construction program, the largest project in the nation, by coordinating and closing and opening 27 branch libraries, including in my district, done a great job. Congratulations, Betsy Hoag.
I just want to say thank you to the council for this award, but really, I want to thank all of these people here, my office staff, I couldn't do it without them. I've had a great career with the library, and I'm very pleased to get this award.
Our next recipient, David Kabashima. Is that right, David?
Sir.
Right on that, right? That's good, David Kabashima. So, that's good. Associate Zoning Administrator, Office of Zoning Administration, City Planning Department. Throughout his 35-year career, David has demonstrated outstanding dedication to duty and leadership qualities, and contributed to the body of knowledge involved in land use planning of the city. He has repeatedly been called upon to lead efforts in new areas such as those mandated under the recent charter changes. He has received recognition for unusual services rendered, and recognized by the public for his prompt and genuine regard for their concerns. Most recently, David served as Department Liaison to a section that planned and implemented the Playa Vista Mixed Use Master Plan Development, one of the most complex projects ever developed in Los Angeles. David's dedication to duty has contributed much to the city being able to meet the many challenges of land use planning. David, congratulations to you. Get up here, David, before Khan out pushes you to the microphone.
This is quite an honor, and I really appreciate it, and thank you very much. Uh, I've had a great career here, and, uh, I'd like to also give recognition to Bob Janvici, who's given me a lot of counsel in the last six years. Thank you.
Take a moment to thank Dave. I was just reminding him that back in the late 80s, early 90s, uh, the crew was so overworked, and space was so limited, they were actually analyzing plans in the hallways. As people lined up down the hall and have the plans set up, um, this was a can-do attitude, with the support of Bob and all the other folks who were Managers in the past. To see Dave go through all those, uh, growing pains and fulfilling these tremendous roles, and be able to knock out all those cases in his capacity, I just want to thank him for his hard work, and for the role model that, that he is for many of the younger planners. Thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you all for being here. You're welcome, Khan. Well, we have a recipient who doesn't want to show up, so, uh, I'm going to order the Sergeant Arms to go retrieve him. Mr. Gordon Lawler, who's in, on the 12th floor of City Hall East. If the Sergeant Arms can go get Mr. Gordon Lawler, we're going to hold his presentation until we get him here. So, uh, Sergeant Arms, I'm serious, he's, he's up there in his office, and we need to somehow, he's, he is, I'm sure he is, he's a 40-year employee, and we're going to bring him down here, one way or another, either in handcuffs or voluntarily, so, uh... So we're going to, we're going to hold off on Mr. Lawler until Sergeant Arms brings him into council. Look at those beautiful twins. Here we go. Uh, so while we wait for Gordon Lawler to show up, voluntary or involuntary, uh, we're going to proceed. Richard Smith, Police Officer, Scientific Investigation Division, Los Angeles Police Department, with his two, are these your daughters? Beautiful twins, look at those beautiful little girls. Let's hear it for Richard. They look like little princesses, both of them, beautiful. Often referred to as the one-man weapon against crime, Officer Smith has single-handedly linked thousands of shooting crimes through scientific technology. His visual acuity and memory for detail enable him to recognize fired cartridge cases from different shooting scenes. He has matched more evidence on the firearms data systems than 85% of all other police agencies in the nation. Officer Smith's skills at recognizing the subtle and discreet features on fired cartridge components has earned him a unique standing in the forensic firearms community and law enforcement as the go-to gun guru of LAPD. And they think CSI was popular. Officer Richard Smith, with his lovely family, here receiving the Career Service Award.
Yes, I'd just like to thank the council for this award, and to let you know that no man is an island, I'd like to thank all my coworkers for what they do in order to make me, uh, look good. One of the main coworkers is my supervisor, Doreen Hudson here, who recognized, uh, some of the abilities that I, uh, was able to bring to the unit, and help the unit with, and put me in a position to do what I did, and, um... You've, you've got a chance to see my, two of my main inspirations here, but I'd also like to thank my wife for, uh, standing behind me. Also, the, the original guy who gave me a chance, Captain Beno here, who is the person that invited me into the Scientific Investigation Unit, and gave me that original chance, so thank you very much.
Let's go here for the photo. Honey, we're going to do a picture up here. Department of General Services. Good morning. Because of her innovations in the Mail Service Division, Chandra has saved the city over $1.4 million in postage in valuable time over the last four years. That's $1.4 million over the last four years. Faced with a severely underfunded postage account, she took several proactive measures to curtail the city's postage costs. Those measures included mail co-mingling, conducting quarterly training seminars, advising departments how to utilize various techniques to reduce mailing costs, and soliciting the departments to use the barcode automated program. As a result, mass mailers now receive reduced automation postage rates at 38% per mail piece. Considering the 12 million pieces of outbound mail generated each fiscal year, this has resulted in considerable savings to the city, in addition to saving the environment and trees. Without Ms. Mosley's extensive knowledge of mail processing and implementation of the various programs, the city would not have been able to compensate for the severe budget shortfall over the last four years, and saving many, many trees. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. I would like to first thank council, especially Councilman Zine, where he did not mention is he is one of my honorary delivery drivers. So he helped to do the dissemination of that mail that we just spoke of. Also, I would like to thank my managers of GSD, because without them, I came from LAPD, giving me an opportunity to see that there was further advancement within the city. So Mr. Blaine, Mr. Royster, and Melody McCormick, I would like to thank each of you for trusting me to take my staff to a more professional level that the city has ultimately, uh, saved all these dollars for, and, and now have a more professional service in their mail dissemination.
And looking at the crowd with you today, the mail's going to be delayed. The mail will be delayed a little bit today, but we'll get it out. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're still waiting for the arrival of Mr. Gordon Lawler, so, uh, well, he's going to come one way or another, so, or maybe, you know, we could just go to him. No, no, we're going to wait. We're going to wait. I don't know, but, uh, they should have gone.
Gordon? Gordon?
Gordon, we're going to embarrass you one way or another. You know, we could take this whole council up to the 12th floor of City Hall East, maybe we do it up there. One way or another, no, let's go, we'll go next one. Mitch Palmerance, Senior Personnel Analyst 1, Access Service Division, Department of Disability. Mitch is the first blind person to be hired in a professional capacity by the city, been a pioneer of disabled rights. Currently serves as the Americans with Disabilities Compliance Officer, assisting the City of Los Angeles in, to comply with the mandates of the Americans with Disabilities Act. His efforts have helped to ensure that the services and programs of the City of Los Angeles are accessible to people with disabilities. He has endeavored to ensure that all city departments are aware of their responsibilities, and that training is provided with regard to the mandates of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Mr. Palmerance diligently and with tenacity helped develop and continues to avert many non-compliance lawsuits against the City of Los Angeles, saving us millions of dollars in liability. Congratulate, Mitch Palmerance, Senior Personnel Analyst.
Thank you very much to the council, to, uh, our former Executive Director Sharon Morris, and our current Executive Director Regina Houston-Swain, for, uh, submitting my name and nomination. It's been a very wild ride over these last 30 years, um, to make the City of Los Angeles, I believe, the most compliant, ADA-compliant city, large city in the country. I'd be careful how I say that, because my wife is here, and she chairs the Accessibility Commission in Pasadena, and ironically, one of our council members, Paul Little, was here, and he may still be listening. I want to also, however, acknowledge the man who gave me my start, who believed that a blind person could work in an administrative capacity with the City of Los Angeles, the man who hired me back in 1975, Dave Goransky, who was tragically killed in 1980. A wonderful, wonderful man, and I don't think I'd be here if it weren't for Dave. Thank you very much.
City Hall East, and he's, he's on the run. And he's not running over here. So if the CAO people, please come forward. We're going to do Gordon Lawler's presentation, and we'll send him the videotape.
Do we have a stand-in?
Showing that we're all embarrassed of... We got the whole, Bill wanted to get everyone back to work for the CAO's office. Everyone's here except the one who's receiving the honor, Gordon Lawler. Why, here he's hiding out in the restroom. Okay. Gordon Lawler, Senior Administrative Assistant 2, Employee Relations Division, City Administrative Officer. I refer to him Gordon as Mr. Win-Win. Gordon Lawler's career has spanned four decades, four mayors, and every city administrative officer since the office was created. His career has included dedicated work in both the Office of the CAO, and as a Deputy Mayor during Mayor Yorick's administration, having served in several divisions... Having served in several divisions of the CAO's office, Gordon is a highly skilled and gifted negotiator, unless he's dealing with Bill Harkness. Some of the notable issues he negotiated, well, he's gonna see the videotape, so he'll like that one, include implementation of the Christopher Commission recommendations, the 1984 Olympics Agreement, provisions to implement Fair Labor Standards Act requirements, implementation of the flexible work schedule, which all the officers love, the 312-410 Plan, and most recently, the Consent Decree requirements. Gordon was also a key architect of the city's highly praised comparable worth agreement during the 1980s. This landmark agreement became a model throughout the nation. Gordon is truly a dedicated public servant who has always worked for the best interest of the city and its citizens. And here to accept the award for Mr. Gordon Lawler on behalf is the City Administrative Officer and all the crew, including Commander Jimmy Tatro, Captain Dick Beno, and Chief Gascon, and Pete Repovich, and the whole world's here for Gordon Lawler, except Gordon Lawler. Bill Fujoka.
When I nominated Gordon for this award, he said, "Don't." This is a very, very modest man. We said, "We're gonna do it anyway to recognize his 42 years of service to the city." He's affectionately known in Employee Relations as Yoda, 'cause he's, what he has done is he's taught all of our Employee Relations rep. Cindy's smiling over here, 'cause she knows what Gordon has brought to the city in all these years. If you can pan, can you pan this room? Can you kinda show the room? For Gordon to know, the vast majority, if not all, of the CAO is standing behind me. There's about 80 to 90 people behind me. We're all here 'cause we love and respect Gordon. This is out of, this is through our utmost and total admiration in regard for this man. It's something that you can see back here, and all these people here. This is the CAO coming out. Out of our regard and respect for a man who's been with us, remember, he's been, he worked for Sam Yorkey. He's worked for every CAO that's ever existed for the city. He's gonna be here for a long time. We all love you, Gordon. Jimmy's gonna say something.
Gordon, I'd just like to congratulate Jim Tatro from the Police Department. I'd like to congratulate you on the recognition today. I phoned Gordon, by the way, a little while ago, and asked him if he'd come down, and he started to act like he was gonna come down, and I said, "Are you coming down?" And he responded, "Hell, no." But, and I think he ran then. But, anyway, Gordon, Dick Beno and I are here to thank you for your great work with the city, and again, it's a real privilege, and hope there's many, many more years here for you. Thank you.
So, we could all tease Gordon that the whole crew was here, except for him, to receive the award for the Career Service Award, and I know my personal experience with Gordon dates way, way back to the Police Protective League when he gave a class of win-win negotiations. And Gordon's always had that attitude, win-win, win-win for the employees, win-win for the city, win-win for everyone. So, Gordon, you're not here, but you're here, you are here somewhere. One of the restrooms that's locked down, Gordon's hiding there. So, if you see Gordon, please congratulate him. God bless you, Gordon. Thank you. Our next recipient, Parking Manager, Parking Service Division, Department of General Services, Benjamin Setiarto. As Parking Manager, Benjamin has forged business partnerships with other city departments that have not only generated new revenues for the city, but has successfully increased revenues and operational efficiencies at existing parking facilities. Less than four years ago, the Parking Service Division operated seven parking facilities, primary employee parking, with a combined 4,255 spaces, generating $2 million in revenue. Today, the division generates 28 facilities with a combined 11,387 spaces, generating over $9 million in revenue. Parking Manager, Parking Service Division, Benjamin Setiarto. Benjamin.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity, and it's a great honor to receive this award. And I'd like to thank my staff, my manager, Mr. Blaine, Mr. Royster, and Ms. McCormick.
All right, thank you. Brad Smith, Chief Deputy City Engineer Two, Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering. Over 35 years of city service, Brad Smith has held positions from Division Head to interim City Engineer, overseeing major programs of the Bureau of Engineering, including bond, wastewater, streets, and municipal facilities, capital improvement programs, and public permit services. Recently been assigned as the city's Infrastructure Bond Program Manager, consisting of over $1 billion of bond-funded construction projects. Most notably, Brad was instrumental in the development of the Bureau's Project Delivery Manual. Brad Smith, congratulations.
Thank you very much, councilmen and councilmembers. This is a Career Service Award, and a career occurs in a context. It's a context of what you, as the city officials, give to your staff to do, and it's the context of the people that we work with, and these wonderful folks behind me are that for me. Also, they're my lowercase f family. Here's my son, Brian, my uppercase family. All of this happens in the context, and I've been blessed for 37 years to be here trying to deliver infrastructure for the city. There's a lot more to go. We've still got a lot more bond projects to do. We're gonna get them delivered for you, and you know what? Work's become fun again after a few years where it wasn't so much fun. So, I wanna thank you for that, and I think you've got a lot of folks down here that feel the same way, all these other honorees, and I'd like to congratulate them myself, too. Thank you very much.
The following individuals are being recognized for performing service beyond the call of duty to a person or persons whose life, safety, or health was in jeopardy. Our first recipient, Terry Price, Police Service Representative, Communications Division, Terry Price was on her way home from work when she noticed a vehicle stopped at the guardrail on the 101 freeway. She observed a female helping a second person that appeared to be choking. Believing it was a medical emergency, Ms. Price immediately exited the freeway, circled, re-entered the freeway to stop behind the vehicle. The female approached Ms. Price's car and informed her that her mother was walking down the freeway and appeared to be entering the lanes of oncoming traffic. While on the line with the Los Angeles Police Department's 9/11 operator, Ms. Price exited her vehicle and grabbed the woman, attempting to pull her to safety. Ms. Price forced the woman to the sound wall and held her there until the California Highway Patrol arrived and performed the final rescue. Terry Price, Los Angeles Police Department, Police Service Representative Two.
Thank you, I'm honored. I'd like to thank my family, my supervisors, and recognize the best 911 operators in the world, my coworkers. And as a reminder, 911 is for life-threatening emergencies, non-emergencies, 877, ask LAPD, and children, stop playing on the phone.
No, no, we're gonna wait.
311? Oh, and you can also dial 311 for information.
Richard, Solid Resource Manager Two, Solid Resource South Collection Division, Bureau of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation. Following a labor management meeting, Richard noticed a pregnant woman looking down at the passing cars from the overpass of the 110 freeway. As he passed her, he noticed that the woman had one leg over the railing and appeared to be ready to jump. Richard immediately grabbed the woman and pulled her back. He continued to restrain her until the police arrived. He was successful in saving the life of the woman and also the life of her unborn child. Richard Miles.
I would just like to thank the council, members of, honorable members of the council, and Councilman Zine in particular. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to recognize two award recipients that are not able to be with us today. Robert Henry, Senior Management Analyst Two, Public Affairs Division, Harvard Department, and Jim Ritchie, Deputy Executive Director, Los Angeles World Airport. Mr. President, that concludes the presentations, and let's hear it again for all the recipients. Career Service Award, 2004. And if the recipients will follow me, we're gonna do photos in the back room. Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and congratulations to all the recipients. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti-Grohan, Levange Ledlow, Misakowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergosa, Weiss, Sinpedea, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Ms. Zine seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 10 are ordinances regarding street lighting districts, either denying the protests and confirming the assessments, or finding that there are majority protests and abandoning.
Okay, members, items 1 through 10 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items 1 through 10, 1 through 10, seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items being ordinances do carry over for a second reading. Next items, please.
Next items are also public hearing items, 7, excuse me, 11 through 17, and the recommendation for council action would be to continue the hearing and ordinances to June 14th.
Colleagues, items 11 through 17 now before us, and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, and without objection, continue to June 14th. Next items, please.
Next item is, excuse me, item number 18, and that is also a public hearing item.
Okay, and I do not have speaker cards on item 18. Public hearing is open and closed. Members of the council wishing to speak on item 18, we're to call this item special. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, the item is an ordinance and also carries over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 19 through 29. On items 27, 28, and 29, there are two reports on the file, and I believe the recommendation would be to adopt the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Okay, Ms. Misakowski moves. Colleagues, we have items 19 through 29 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Items to be called special, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 30 through 50, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, members, I do have a card on item 41. We'll call that special on the balance of the items. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, wishing to call any item special, Mr. Smith.
50.
50, call special by Mr. Smith. Any other specials? Items 30 through 49, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourth with an item 30, please. Next items.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 51 is an item noticed for public hearing.
And I do have a card on item 51, we'll call that special.
Next item is item number 52, and that's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Members, I do not have speaker requests on item 52. Public hearings open and closed. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Parks has requested that that matter be continued until Friday.
Okay, item 52, colleagues, any objection to continuing? Item 52, seeing none, so ordered, and that new hearing date is May 27th. Next items, please.
Next items are notes for which public hearings have not been held, items 53 through 55, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items are before the city council today. I do have a card on item 54, we'll call that special. On items 53 and 55, I do not have speaker requests. Public hearings are open and closed. Mr. Weiss.
Call 55 special, please.
55, call special. Mr. Garcetti.
Just on 54, if I could request that we take it out of order, just to, 'cause I have the excuse to leave council, if that's okay?
Okay, we'll take item 54 out of order. Any requests to call 53 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 53, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved.
That would take council back to the items called special. Do we should take up item 54 first?
Let's take up item 54 out of order for Mr. Garcetti.
We have, you said, do we have a card on it, but we don't need to open?
On item 54, yes, we do. Let's go to speaker cards first.
Okay.
Council calls forward Juanita Delams and Joyce Dillard on item 54.
Juanita Delomas, Sierra Club. Item 54 on today's agenda. We have objections to the MOU with being trust for three-pocket parks and performance of related future maintenance. The objection is the privatization of parks. We request more hearings, and we are in objection to the privatization of city parks. There's three city parks mentioned. 15262, West Marzen Street, 5207, South Broadway, 1644, 1648, Beverly Boulevard. The objection of privatization of parks without public hearing, leasing them to nonprofit organizations, is a concept that the Sierra Club does not approve. That's the Angeles chapter of the Sierra Club. And so, we would prefer that there be more hearings with Wrenken Parks Department in the future. In 1889, our, the city charter, the original city charter was against the privatization of a dedicated park, okay? And we should consider that these parklands and park funding belong to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have before you, part of you have part of it, the city clerk has a full report, 'cause I didn't have enough time to xerox, this was such a short notice on this item. There was a report in 1901 from the Park Commission, and it was excellent, because it really told what the intention was. And let me read it into the record. "In conclusion, we wish to impress upon the minds of our citizens, every man, woman, and child, that public parks are owned..." and child, that public parks are owned by them. This ownership should be fully realized, and everyone should be brought to feel that they are heartily welcome to enjoy the fullest extent, all the benefits such grounds afford, subject only to such rules and regulations as are indispensable, both for their protection and the proper maintenance of the property. We wish the people to know that this is the first aim and end of the Park Department, and that only by such cooperation can the full blessings of the park be enjoyed." The parks are not for privatization. It is your responsibility as a city council to the Valley, to San Pedro, to the west side, to south, to central, to the east Los Angeles side, east side, to provide parks for the public without leasing to private nonprofits, to provide maintenance for those parks. The intention here is to use the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, who receives funding from the California Department of Conservation, California Service Corps, L.A. City Environmental Affairs, Community Development Department, Department of Water Power, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. You're using young adults as labor. That's not the intention of our city forefathers. We were park poor in the late 1800s, and yet we're still hearing the same story now with excuses you can't manage well. That's not good enough. Please deny this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I know Mr. Labange would very much like to be here and is not here in council today, but I know there's been a number of public hearings on this. I want to invite the Wrenken Parks Department, the city attorney, to the table and just thank them, first of all, for their hard work on this. To clarify a couple of things that were just brought up in public comment, part of this is a bequest for the city to actually buy and own these parks. Is that correct?
Correct. The bequest that was left to the city provides $4 million to the city to acquire and develop parks, and then, not with the $4 million, not with trust funds, to maintain those three parks into the future. So that's the intent. The reason for a lease-back situation is to create a rental obligation of the city to provide that maintenance. So through the LSE, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, there will be a lease, but then a lease back to the city to create a rental obligation of the city by providing the maintenance.
Thank you for that clarification, because I think that's important for us to know and to make sure that they remain public. We've seen some of the trust partnerships that exist in the city, whether it's Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, the Trust for Public Land, the Neighborhood Land Trust now, and also we've seen in New York, places like Central Park be very well administered as public spaces, but with the involvement of nonprofit, publicly accountable nonprofit entities like the Neighborhood Land Trust. There's a, the motion that we have put here before, that's before everybody, I would move, this is in conjunction with working with the city attorney's office and the Department of Wrenken Parks on this, to approve the MOU and to authorize the president, secretary of the Board of Recreation and Parks commissioners on behalf of the city to execute this MOU. So I'd ask for your support today in that, and I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add at this time, but otherwise, I would move that.
I could just very, very briefly summarize the terms of the MOU. The trustees have selected three projects from the 12 that the council approved to be submitted to them, and the three projects that they would like to develop, that would be developed into neighborhood pocket parks, they are the ones located at West Marson Street in Council District Number Six, South Broadway in Council District Nine, and Beverly Boulevard in Council District Thirteen. The West Marson Street property is already owned by the city and was on the list of city surplus properties. The cost to acquire the other two properties and develop all three with universally accessible playground equipment, picnic areas, landscaping, drinking fountains, perimeter fencing, and security lighting, has been estimated by the Bureau of Engineering and the Department of General Services to be $3.9 million. If the city meets the terms and conditions of the MOU and completes all three projects, the city would receive the entire $4 million bequest. If the city does not complete any project, the amount allocated to the project or projects the city does not do would not be received. $760,000 has been allocated to the development of the West Marson Street property, $1 million for the acquisition and development of the South Broadway property, and $2.24 million for the acquisition and development of the Beverly Boulevard property. In the event of cost overruns, the city would agree to complete all the projects undertaken. Money saved on one project, however, could be allocated to completion of another project. Within 90 days, the city will negotiate an escrow agreement specifying the terms of dispersal of the funds. The terms of the bequest include using, preclude, excuse me, they preclude using Bing Trust funds for future maintenance. For the purpose of ensuring the city will have high-quality maintenance provided for the pocket parks, the city will enter into a 99-year lease with the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust to provide the maintenance. The Neighborhood Land Trust will sublease the pocket parks back to the city for 99 years. The city's rental obligation under the sublease will be to complete the park improvements and provide the maintenance. However, the city may contract out for the maintenance. The Neighborhood Land Trust has agreed it will enter into a contract with the city to provide the maintenance through a contract with the Los Angeles Conservation Corps at no cost to the city. The standard of maintenance will be equivalent in quality to Grand Hope Park, Maguire Gardens, and Robert Burns Park, a city-maintained neighborhood park located at the corner of Beverly and Van Ness, and in accordance with the maintenance standards and security plan attached to the MOU as Exhibit E, which contains types and frequency of specified maintenance tasks. The city will use the services of the Bureau of Engineering to design the projects. Will use its standard competitive bid process to select contractors to install the design improvements. The city must acquire the two properties not owned, transfer jurisdiction to Department of Recreation and Parks of the West Marson Street property, and complete all three designs by February 27, 2006, complete the bid and award process by July 27, 2006, and complete construction and development of the projects by July 27, 2007. The city shall have a 30-day grace period on each of the time limits. Failure to meet the time limits for a project would result in the city losing the amount of funds allocated to that project. I would like to emphasize that the council is not being asked to give final approval to the three projects at this time, but that we'll be back with the escrow instructions within 90 days, and at that time, hope to be seeking final approval of the projects, the three projects, after completion and consideration of appropriate environmental studies.
Okay. Thank you, and again, thank you to the Neighborhood Land Trust, Sheila Berman, our executive director, who's here as well, Wrenken Parks, and most of all, thank you to the Bing Trust. It's not every single day that citizens here have the foresight to leave $4 million to increase the city's green space, and it is a marvelous, wonderful gift, which appreciate everybody acting with due diligence, but also with the safeguards to make sure that we can increase that green space in the city. So with that, I'd ask for folks' support. Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
I just wanted to stand also in support of this and congratulate the department, the city attorney, and the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust as well for this effort. And I was just, I called, I started to speak just to ask, with 12 that were submitted and approved by the L.A. City Council as options and choices in which you could try to look, what kind of advice, what kind of information can you give for the next round to neighborhoods and communities to help look at what it is that you're looking at and what makes a successful application to be able to award it? Is the question of the availability of the land, due diligence in terms of looking at what the quality of the land is, or willing seller? I mean, is it all of those? What are the highest ingredients that one can try, pick, to select from to help make sure that the funds in the future will be able to be best chosen by thing? I'm sure we all have properties and interests in lots of our neighborhoods for these kinds of properties. So what are the best qualifiers to put it forward, are those who are going to be searching for the next round?
In this case, council member, we were, there was a requirement that it be in underprivileged communities, and so the first really criteria were that they be in underprivileged communities. The second were that they were parks with playgrounds, and they were immediately executable. So all three projects that were chosen are small projects that could be easily executable and could be done within a relatively short time.
And when you say small, what is the relative range of sizes for a small pocket park?
We're talking about 10,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. I just thought it would be useful to put that out there. So nonprofit groups, citizen organizations, and others, particularly in those areas where they might say, gee, that thing that's been either abandoned or not well-used, might be ideal to submit and select and see if it can work. So I appreciate that.
And council member, we're happy, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, we were created to do this type of work, and so we offer to any nonprofits, other nonprofits, and community organizations out there, that we'd love to work with them to be able to move their park projects forward.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and amplify the role Neighborhood Land Trust is playing in this particular dynamic. You know, colleagues, we have these big departments, these really giant mechanisms, if you will, that moves the thousands of acreage that we control, but we don't have is the ability to be nimble, to move on small pocket parks, and to create the kinds of environments that truly decreases the pressures that are felt in these underprivileged areas. We are literally talking about 10,000 square feet. That, for some of us, might mean the size of two small residential units. Small parcels, an average parcel is 5,000 square feet. Most of the neighborhoods that this area, this group is working in, there are lots that are between 3,000 to 5,000, that are substandard. And so the relief they create is incredible. That 10,000-square-foot, 5,000-square-foot pocket park allows the kids who are right now stuck playing in those fire escapes, in the hallways, the tenement buildings, we have two or three families in one-bedroom units. This is almost like a haven for them, a place to actually fill grass and be able to play in. Unfortunately, our city is not quick enough, given the high price of real estate and how quickly this industry moves, to have a team of people. The Neighborhood Land Trusts are made up of former employees who worked in city departments, folks who worked in this district, in these districts as staff folks. We have corporate representatives who work with environmental issues, water issues. So we have an expertise in this board that allows us to move quick. So I want to just take this time to thank them and work with them in such a way we can create and close these gaps. Again, I'm sharing this for some of you at the table. It might sound redundant, or I'm being overly generous here, but I think it's important to understand their role, because our city can't seem to move as quick as they need to in these areas that are so underserved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 54 is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 41, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Item 41 now before us, and the council calls forward Mr. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. You know, I love all the honors that you have in this, and it's great to honor employees of the city, but not everything is so perfect in the city of L.A. And notice how empty the chambers are now after everybody has been honored. Item number 41 has to do with a communication of the interim executive director of the Harvard Department relative to revised foreign travel request by Harvard Department commissioners. Now, I don't know how to pronounce his name. I think it's Tancic. Is that correct, President Padilla? I read about him during the heated mayoral campaign. I read about very dangerous charges, allegations filed against Commissioner Tancic during the heat of the campaign, and apparently, he was going to go traveling to Shanghai, China, with another commissioner named Elwood Louis. But in this, number 41, because Commissioner Tancic will not be traveling, approval doesn't have to be granted, because only one commissioner is traveling pursuant to L.A. Administrative Code Section 424.2.9. Now, if Rick Olaf is listening, or somebody from the L.A. Times is listening right now, I'd like to know why was Tancic going to be traveling to Shanghai? What was the city business he was going to do? How much was it going to go to cost? And why is he not traveling? And why should it be that only one commissioner, if one commissioner is going, doesn't have to be approved? This is something that's important, and we're going to have a new mayor coming in here July 1st. Everybody knows that I supported him, and this kind of stuff just can't be railroaded through in a meeting. Item number 41 is important, and if somebody let me know what's going on. You know, once an accountant, always an accountant. A lot of the young folks on Antonio's staff think I'm nuts, but we old guys know what we're doing also. Thank you. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for item 41. Members of the council wishing to speak on item 41? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 50 called special by council member Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, when we discussed this in context of the budget, Mr. Zine and I had some questions about whether or not L.A. USD wanted us there or not, and we instructed the department to negotiate an agreement before we authorized these positions, so that I just asked if there's anyone here from the department or the CIO can tell us if we have negotiated an MOU or have something in the form of an agreement with L.A. USD before we fund these positions.
See Mr. Fujioke come in to the front table.
We haven't reached a formal agreement yet. We have the, a draft of an MOU between our Human Relations Commission and L.A. USD, and we hope to finish those negotiations soon, but we haven't reached one yet.
When you say we have a draft, we've written a draft, or they've agreed to sign something?
No, we've written a draft. We haven't received any indication from, formal indication from L.A. USD yet. And so if you want, if you'd like to hold this item for another week, that would be reasonable and appropriate.
That would be my suggestion, because the council obviously had some concerns, and all of us that have dealt with L.A. USD know that getting something in agreement with them is not an easy task. And so I think it'd be in our best interest to hold this back until we have something in a formal agreement, or indication at least. All right, thank you. So moved.
Mr. Zine.
Bill, before you go away, I was at Taft High School last week with council members, Mayor-elect Antonio Viegas, Jack Weiss, Bernard Parks. We were there when they had an outbreak at Taft High School in the San Fernando Valley. When I look at the proposal for three, the city has a lot of high schools, a lot of middle schools, and there's a lot of problems occurring. Jim Hill from Channel 2, the sports director, is working on a program to help eliminate some of these problems. Milton Bradley from the Dodgers joined us Saturday for an activity to try and stem some of this activity between the different ethnic racial groups. We're looking at a problem not only in South Los Angeles and East Los Angeles, but in the San Fernando Valley, and I question the school district's willingness to participate. We're going to carry the ball with three. I think we need more than three if we're really going to be successful with this, and bring in other components. Human relations is important, but the reality is, there is tension in the communities, in the high schools. There's gang activity taking place, which we know, and I question how much we're spending L.A. Unified after-school programs that are working, that aren't working. There's a tremendous amount of money that this city is spending with our youth through the schools beyond the bill. The number of programs that we funded.
L.A. Best.
How many, pardon me?
L.A. Best.
L.A. Best. How many of those programs are actually working, and how much of that money could we divert to something where we're going to get human relations to get out there and do something that's going to be positive to help this? This new movie coming out, The Longest Yard, brings that into focus. Jim Hill brought together 500 students from different schools, ethnic schools, a Saturday night, and a very positive program. He's going to continue that. Councilmember Ledlow and I are working on that, and our mayor-elect's going to be working on it to carry that forward on a positive program. But I question, how much are we spending that we could divert to human relations? How much of the money, we're not getting a return on our dollar, because it's not producing the results we want? If we've got this continuing saga taking place, and people are debating if the Taft incident was racially motivated or not, there's dispute regarding that. The question is, are we spending the money wisely? Could we do better with the money that we've got? As I understand, there's millions of dollars going into these after-school programs from the city in the L.A. Unified School District, and how willing are they to reach out, other than saying, you come in and do what you want to do, but be a partner in that? And money shows the commitment. I know they're building a lot of schools, but what is their commitment to help with this human relations? Because I understand they don't have a human relations branch anymore.
Which they don't.
And if we take that forward with the human relations, and Robert Feeling, who does a great job, I don't think three's enough. And I think realistically, we need to have a partnership with them, and if we've got to divert some money from some of the programs that aren't working, that we're already funding, then I would suggest we look into that as a possible solution to help stem this problem. Because Taft, the parents were outraged, the students were outraged, and the media were like piranhas at that scene, all over the place, and trying to fuel this. And oftentimes, that's the case, when the people see the media arrive at the scene, and every news truck was there with the helicopters. We need to come up with something that's going to be proactive versus a cosmetic clear cell remedy. cell remedy because it's deeply entrenched, and I don't see it getting a lot better. So if you can include that in...
We can give a report back on the various programs we have with L.A. Unified. Some, I think each program has its own merits, but also focuses on different aspects and different age limits, or age groups within L.A. Unified. The three positions will augment what Human Relations Commission currently has working with L.A. Unified. It's, I'll be the first to admit, even with the total of five positions, it's insufficient to meet the need. But what's even more critical is for L.A. USD to step up and be a full partner with us because I feel they have the primary responsibility. We're offering assistance, but the primary responsibility rests with L.A. USD.
I think that's really the case, is that we could have our human relations full-time on that and do nothing else, and there's a lot of other activities they have to get involved in. And if the school district's not willing to step up to the plate for the protection of the students and the teachers and the community, then there's something wrong with that, that we have to break through that cycle and get them to the table. And if we are funding these other programs, and this is more important than those others, then we divert the money and we put enough people in there to make the difference. Because I was surprised to see the problems that were taking place at Taft High School. And there's a number of high schools in the valley that have the potential for that same kind of conflict. And it's not just African-American and Latino. There's other nationalities that get involved in this in the San Fernando Valley. So if you can just include that in how many millions are being spent on programs and how much Rabbi Freeling needs to actually have and affect the program, and get the school district to buy in versus us stepping in and taking over, have them be a partner in it whichever way they think is appropriate.
We'll add that to our report back.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we do have a motion to continue this item on the desk. Ms. Misakowski.
Yeah, and I support the continuation, but include this in that feedback.
One, I was going to speak. If we continue for just one week, I don't mind. But members, when we were in committee on the budget a week ago, we talked about the need to jumpstart this because of the work that the Human Relations Commission is doing and its project coordinators. Per the request by Councilmember Parks in his office, and I think incurred in by the CIO, I was actually going to amend this motion to allow the three project coordinators, which we put in the budget, to be hired now because they're maybe creating some backfills there. Three are in the budget as of July 1st. We were jumpstarting the two that were new, but the third, which is going to be reimbursed by the Fire Department for some of the human relations work that they need to do, makes sense as well. Delay in this point, I understand what Mr. Smith is asking, but I don't think we're going to get any more money from the L.A. Unified School District. Getting more certainty in terms of the other outreach and the things like that is fine, but I really wouldn't want to delay more than a week so that we can really let not only these people be hired, but in being hired to give relief to the people who are out there, as we heard in committee, they are working very, very, very hard. And unfortunately, as we're at the end of the school year and the summertime heat, it may literally only get hotter on those campuses in this next month. So one week delay is not problematic if I can also have the amendment to change it to the three, so all three can be hired as soon as we authorize it, hopefully next week, and then have the report back that Mr. Fujioke is talking about. And Mr. Zine is right. Some other programs that are out there may not be as effective as the kind of work intervention here. But we've said before, and we said in what Mr. Ludlow has put together on the ad hoc gang group, that we need to be working on all cylinders, on all the programs. Let's, I don't think that there's programs that are bad. I think L.A.'s Best is a great program in working with a different kind of age group, a different element, but we need across-the-board infusion of funds in all different programs. And where we can say that there are some programs that are not working well and divert those funds to something that better makes sense. But this is something we consciously did. We consciously said the council wants to authorize this. It was clearly an add in the budget, an add that we all underscored, and all we're saying is it was so critical that everything we did to go into effect is July 1st. This was one of the two or three things we said, let's get started, let's get the head started at the end of this year before waiting to July 1st. So I just want to remind us that it's important, and one week's continuous. I don't think we'll do any harm, but let's make sure it's the three rather than the two.
Okay. Rabbi Freeling, and then Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine are on the QO as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. In preparing some material for the mayor-elect's transition team yesterday, I asked Arturo Pina to provide us with a summary of the number of schools in which we are currently operating. Remember now, we're talking about a field team of five people. We are currently working on 23 different campuses, elementary, middle school, and high school, all of which are in trouble. The Justice Department records the fact that in the last six months, we have been on more than, more than that many campuses. Therefore, we need the kind of manpower that we're asking for just simply to maintain our positions and to be able to then move from the area of intervention to really the area of prevention, which we consider to be very important. We are deeply grateful for the support that we are receiving from City Council. We clearly appreciate, especially the remarks of Councilmember Cardenas, who has pointed out to all of you that we and some of the other departments of the city are really in the front line of law enforcement. Because as a matter of fact, as he has said publicly, the work that we are doing is well in advance of any violence breaking out, and therefore, there is a good possibility that we are reducing the possibility of crises that the city has to go through. I also want to remind you that a considerable number of public schools are on a 12-month track, which means that we don't have the leisure of the summer months to prepare ourselves for the next academic year because that situation simply does not occur, as witness the work that we're doing on the campus of Jefferson High School. Therefore, my being here this morning is simply to reinforce those comments which I've shared with you in terms of the necessity of our finding the means by which we can begin the interviewing process, not spending any money during the current fiscal year because it'll take us at least that amount of time between now and July 1 to interview and then to hire, but to know full well that as of the beginning of the next fiscal year, July 1, that we will have the necessary people in place to go on with our work, not only on school campuses, but I to remind you citywide, including all of your districts and especially within your neighborhood councils.
One quick comment. I asked the rabbi a question regarding the MOU, and he stated that it is highly unlikely the L.A. Unified School District will sign an MOU with us. So that's very, very important. It's a very critical factor. It's disconcerting at best that we may be going forward without a formal agreement with L.A. USD. It's an important point.
Mr. Smith, you'll remember that we have presented to them as early as 2002, a scheme by which we would do the work and they would provide us with the means. We have gotten absolutely nowhere, including the last several months in which I have been back to them once again. And if you'll remember, at Budget and Finance, I reported, and also to the full City Council, that the attitude of the superintendent is to welcome us at the table, to regard us as viable partners, but clearly with the understanding that it is against his policy to grant monies to so-called outside agencies, and we are listed among them. But I would also remind you that there is a commitment on the part of some within this building, including the mayor, to use city resources to surmount some of the challenges that the city schools are now involved in.
Mr. Smith.
When I asked for a week delay, it was not to elicit money from L.A. Unified. You're not going to get it. I understand that. And I know what happened two years ago. I know we're not going to get that. I think what we wanted to see was a willingness on the part of L.A. USD to utilize your services. And you had made some comments in committee that you hadn't even been welcomed at one of the scenes, that you were actually questioning, why are you here? I am flabbergasted at L.A. USD every day of the week. I can't understand what goes on over there sometimes, quite frankly, when you're providing a very valuable service to them and they give us a heartache over it. I said in committee, I want to fund these positions. I think they're necessary. I think our schools are on the verge of a racial cataclysm, quite frankly. I'm very concerned about what's going on on our school campus today, and I think your services are absolutely needed. The question I asked is not so much that we get money from them, because we're not going to, but I want to see a willingness to work with us, that if we're going to send your teams over there, that they welcome you on the campuses, they find a role for you, and I want to see that as an agreement. That's what I want to see. If you get five cents out of them, I'll give you a big pay raise because that's an accomplishment worthy of a pay raise, but...
Is that on the public record?
That's on the public record. We'll find a way.
I think I could find a nickel somewhere.
You know, you're not going to get anything out of them, but I want to see cooperation, and that doesn't cost them anything. And so far, that hasn't been always coming, and even you alluded to that in committee. So I am fully supportive. I said in committee, I want these positions. They're necessary. I am really afraid of what's going to happen this coming year on our school campuses, and we need you there. It's not about that, and it's not about the money. It's just, we need L.A. Unified to wake up and tell us they need us there, they want us there, and that you're welcome on their campuses. That's all I want to see from them. Okay?
Mr. Zine for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. L.A. Unified, in my opinion, does not have a great deal of concern about safety and security. They have not done what they need to do for their police department, but when the turmoil takes place, they call in the LAPD. And at Taft High School last week, they had to go on a tactical alert. They brought in officers from other divisions. They brought in the resources of the LAPD to restore order on the campus. L.A. Unified School District Police Department is a professional department that does not have all the resources it needs to maintain safety and security. And I think someone needs to challenge the school district on the priorities of safety and as human relations in addition to education. And when half of the students are failing and not graduating high school, they got a lot of problems. This is one more problem. But when it turns sour and the problems erupt and there's fights, the L.A. Unified School District calls on LAPD, and LAPD responds. So we're spending a lot of time, resources, and money there trying to quell the problems. And I would much rather invest in it in a proactive fashion, and that's why I ask these other programs, the after-school programs, and some of them may be good. The Dare program was good, but that's been scrapped. And maybe we need to analyze and say, maybe our priorities have changed. Maybe this is more a priority than some of the other after-school programs we have where you can have the resources. Because if you've got 20-some schools, five people are not going to go that far. And if you've got outbreaks taking place in the valley, which traditionally didn't have those problems, now they do have those problems, your people can only jump around so far. And it's going to take you an hour to get from one part of the city to the other if you try to get there as quickly as possible with the traffic congestion. So looking at it realistically, if they don't want to sign an MOU, if they don't want to cooperate, the onus is on them to step to the plate. We can provide all the services at our expense, but they don't seem to be willing participants, and it's the students that we're all concerned about. We seem to show more concern about the students than they show, and I think there's something wrong with that picture. Maybe we need to have their Board of Education representatives come in here and get a commitment from them. Maybe we need to do that. Maybe the administration is aloof from the real problem, and the Board of Education elected representatives would show the concern. Because I know some of them personally, and they've expressed to me they're concerned about this. But I find it troubling that we can't get an MOU. And if we don't have an MOU and something occurs, then the city's going to be holding the bag. It's got to be a cooperative effort. We'll offer the assistance. We'll pay for it as we do, but there's got to be an MOU. That is critical to show their willing participation. Because if your folks show up on campus and they say, we're not going to give you access, we're not going to permit you this, permit you that, we've got a serious problem. Now we're really spinning our wheels. So maybe they have to put feet to the fire to say, what are they going to do to help stem this problem that we're trying to resolve for them, which I honestly think it's their responsibility to come up with a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. First, I want to thank councilmembers Parks and Ms. Akowski for the motion, and I appreciate questions Mr. Smith was asking. Just the relationship between the school district and the city of L.A., and you may have mentioned this a couple of minutes ago, best-case scenario, what would you like to see happen, assuming that we were able to get these positions approved, hired, and they're on the streets?
To answer the question, I need to let you know what's happening because I have an idea that some of you are not aware, that there have been nine schools identified as troublesome, most of which are in South Los Angeles. There is now a coalition meeting on a weekly basis. As of last week, we became the co-chairs of that particular group. It consists of people from L.A. USD, people from law enforcement, both LAPD and the school police, and us. That coalition is providing the kind of attention which these schools require. This could be the formula by which other schools are identified throughout the district as troublesome, and that we will be able to bring that coalition and all of its constituent members onto the scene, not only in terms of intervention, but in terms of prevention as well. And what I foresee, if in fact the coalition is held together and its responsibilities are broadened and deepened, is the ability, therefore, for members of our staff, and you're increasing their number, for which we're grateful, to really be there on a long-lasting basis, not only to deal with the immediate problem, but to come up with solutions on those campuses so as to mitigate violence. Meanwhile, we will then pay attention to those schools which are not identified as worrisome but have potential. And we will put in place then preventative programs so as to, in most instances, reduce the possibility of their becoming violent in the first place. So it's a step-by-step process that I'm talking about.
And just again, Rabbi, how are the, what's the, in best-case scenario, what's the relationship between the city and the school district? I didn't get that from your response.
I think that although the administration of the district may be ignoring the realities of some of their safety needs, as has been pointed out by your colleague, I am finding, and Arturo Pina is here to say whatever he chooses to on this subject, that there is less resistance on the part of district superintendents and school principals to let us in because they recognize the fact that we bring to them a message of hope where hope has been absent beforehand. Therefore, the possibilities of partnership are very real. What is missing in the formulation, of course, is money on their side.
Describe the partnership. I mean, can you narrow that down a little bit more, what you're seeking, what you recommend?
Let's take Jefferson. We were on the scene within a matter of minutes when the initial violence erupted.
And by the way, we should all thank you, and I appreciate you raising that. I don't know how many people read your report, but it was, showed incredible proaction on the part of your department, your commission.
Thank you, but that's why we're there. We were on the scene within a few minutes of the second episode of violence which occurred a few days thereafter. We have remained on the scene, among other things, along with some colleagues from L.A. USD, there has been the establishment of a human relations committee on the campus.
Let me do, let me try it another way, just because I don't want my time to expire and want everybody to get... Is there something relational that you're, you think in terms of recommendation, in the event we were to move forward?
Yes.
What is that?
My specific recommendation is to take full advantage of that which you've already put in place, namely that group which will meet under the auspices of the City Council President and the School Board President, so that if necessary, you'll do an end around the administration, and at least the School Board and the City Council are speaking with one voice, articulating the needs of the schools to pay attention to their human relations needs and to allow us to be in the vanguard of those who take those necessary steps.
And I appreciate you going to that point. I want to follow up with a question, but Mr. Fujioke?
Yes, but to your specific point, we need a memorandum of agreement with the city, I mean with the L.A. Unified School District in the city. We need a document that clearly delineates the roles and responsibilities of not only our staff, but also the L.A. USD staff we interact with. We also need an understanding of what activities and what indemnification is needed for those activities that will occur through this agreement. It's important that we have that, we have something in writing between the two entities.
Because I think in a couple of areas, analogy is what we've experienced in the gang intervention component, where there is some significant questions of access when things flare up. Who should be out? Who gets in? When they get there, are they recognized as an authority figure, somebody?
When they get there, are they recognized as an authority figure, somebody that has, you know, should be at the scene? And so I think all of those kind of issues need to get flushed out. It's an interesting concept to tie it into this president's commission. I'm hopeful, but not certain that that would give it the immediate authority that we might need. Because again, I would hate to see your staff member sort of stopped at the door at the high school and not given that ability to get in. And so I think that's going to have to come top to bottom in terms of awareness. Just my thought is, I've long believed that the Human Relations Commission and the functions in the city of L.A. have been treated completely different than that of the county, and that we are grossly under-supporting the work of the commission. And I think whether it be conflict resolution, whether it be intervention, prevention, and again, I want to remind colleagues and everyone that this is sometimes inter-religious conflict resolution, inter-ethnic conflict, inter-gender. Sometimes it's, the different dynamics that happen are so different than what we perceive is the traditional sort of prevention and intervention, which we usually associate with gang violence and just the, on that level. And so I think there's great value in looking at this type of an effort, and I think the two authors of this motion and yourself, great wisdom in trying to move forward. We're a long ways away from, I think, getting to where the county is, and that's no reflection of you at all. I think it's just the fact of what we have looked at in the city's side of this, and I think this is a good step in the right direction, and be very anxious to see how we can all play a role in moving forward. Because the violence is, and the tension, I'll close with this, Mr. President, the tension is so acute right now in our schools, and everybody knows it, everybody feels it. Dennis Zine just went out the other evening and did an amazing thing with some professional athletes to begin talking about it. And I just think it's unavoidable that we should be looking at creative ideas, and I think the only way we get there is putting some teeth there and putting some bodies there. So I'm anxious, I think Mr. Smith's questions are well-taken, and would be very anxious to kind of get some feedback on that, but I'm very supportive of this in concept. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. And if there's nothing further, colleagues, we are continuing this item for one week and hoping for an MOU, or at least a draft of one with those specifics could be before as for consideration. Without objection, this item is continued. Next item?
Next item is item 51, and that was called special for a card from the public.
And the council calls forward Elizabeth Brazil.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Elizabeth Brazil. I'm the executive director of the San Pedro Peninsula Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here this morning as a representative of the San Pedro Downtown Business Improvement District, and I'm here to encourage your support of renewal of our bid this year. It allows us the opportunity to do some cleanup downtown, some marketing, and some holiday promotions that we wouldn't otherwise. So I thank you for your support and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, for your patience. This concludes public comments for item 51. Members of the council wishing to be heard, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Excuse me, Mr. President, the order goes over one week to May 31st.
Okay, carries over for a second reading. Next item?
Item number 55 was called special by council member Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Hey, Mr. President, colleagues. I just had a couple of technical amendments on this matter. The first one is an amendment I will make verbally at the suggestion of the City Ethics Commission. It would be to add the following phrase, and I will give it to the clerk when I'm finished, be it further resolved to help promote transparency in all city activities. The controller is hereby requested to provide a report back to the council no later than September 30, 2005, that discloses the names of all persons who provided gifts to the fund totaling $5,000 or more. The second item, and I'll provide the clerk with the exact innerlineation, would be to also add language regarding the acceptance of in-kind gifts in addition to cash gifts to the fund, and I'll provide the, you've got that already. Those are just two technical matters.
Okay. Without objection, we'll consider item 55 as amended. Any further speakers on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 55 as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item?
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And the council calls forward Ronald Antwine, followed by Melrose Larry Green. Mr. Antwine here. Going once, going twice. Mr. Green.
Melrose Larry Green is here, and I'm proud to say that I've got my voice back. You know, I lost my voice during that heated mayoral campaign, but I told some of the young kids I have all summer to get my voice back, and it came back on May 24th, which happens to be Bob Dylan's birthday, the 64th birthday of the great folk singer Bob Dylan. The reason why I'm here this morning is so everybody watching at home right now and tonight can understand that we all know we have a historic new mayor in the city of L.A. He's on the cover of Newsweek this week, he's on this morning's Oi magazine, Pupusas para Viragosa, this morning on Oi magazine, and best of all, he's right here in the chambers this morning, Mayor-elect Viragosa. He's a wonderful guy, and I, like many others, am going to try to throw him the ring, and I'm going to try to get a job. I probably won't. They'll probably say I'm too old. They'll probably say I'm crazy. I spent years on Howard Stern. I'm a maniac, but whatever. The worst they can do is say no. Of course, they said I wouldn't get into Brandeis and Cornell in high school. But what I want to talk about today is what everybody out there can do that may not have time to work for the new mayor. You can volunteer for the city of L.A. In the past two months when I was campaigning, I met thousands of Los Angelinos, Democrats, Republicans, white, black, brown, with great ideas for the city of L.A. And I know, without speaking for Mayor-elect Viragosa, he's going to have an open administration, and all your ideas should be emailed to his staff, to the wonderful staff, the young staff, the Stanford, Harvard, Berkeley-educated staff. But what I want to talk about is some of the problems that are facing me in the city of L.A. Traffic. Ed Reyes, I've got my city pass right here, the best buy in town, folks. For $3, you can ride the L.A. rails and buses all day long, not only 24, 27 hours, $3. And we've got to do something to get people out of their cars, and I hereby propose, and I'm not trying to brown out Mayor-elect Viragosa right now, that everybody get out of their cars for one day, one day. Just give us one, I don't care where you live, one day, ride the rails, ride the buses, traffic will come way down. Now, I've got a million more things to talk about, but I know you don't want to hear Melrose Larry Green. So let me just say one while I look at my notes over here. I could never have done this in New York City. If I had stayed in New York, folks, I never could have had the access to all of you and to the mayor-elect that I do have. I probably wouldn't have been allowed 1,000 yards within Rudy Giuliani or Michael Bloomberg in New York. And the L.A. City Council is a tremendous, tremendous body, and don't kid yourselves, we used to have a saying when I was in college when we were protesting the war in Vietnam, and those of you over 50 can remember this, "The whole world is watching. The whole world is watching." Well, 30 years later, the whole world is watching again. And when you see that bipartisan Senate resolution of yesterday and this morning's approval of Priscilla Owens, I kind of think that Antonio's election here in Los Angeles has gone all the way to Washington, D.C., and back. And you're going to see me no matter what Antonio's staff decides in the next weeks or months. I'm still Melrose Larry Green, but I've never been happier. People say, "Why are you carrying the Viragosa sign around? He's elected." Well, I'm still celebrating. I'm still celebrating because por los latinos, mi abuelo es cubano, eso no es una elección, es una victoria masiva por todo el mundo, por todo el mundo libre. Viva Antonio, viva Los Angeles, viva America. Thank you. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
And viva Larry Green. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Council President Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, June 1st for personal business, Wednesday, June 22nd for city business, and Friday, June 10th, city business. Those all meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Gru requests to be excused Wednesday, May 25th to leave at noon for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Cardenas moves. Ms. Gru is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, June 17th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused June 1st, 7th, and 8th for city business, and June 10th and 4th for vacation, and those all meet council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused May 27th to leave at 11:45, and June 24th, July 8th, and July 22nd for city business, and a motion is required on the May 25th request.
Ms. Sikowski moves. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests, it's a revised request to be excused Friday, May 27th for the entire meeting for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Ludlow moves. Ms. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, this is the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Ms. Cardenas?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate one of our employees here with the CLA's office, Joe Avila, and also the person who did most of the work, Linda Avila, on the birth of their daughter Mia, beautiful, healthy, young girl. And as I've said many times about my own children, thank God she takes after her mother. Congratulations.
Other announcements? Members' announcements? If not, if I can ask us to please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request we adjourn in memory of Warren Win Rayner, passed away May 20th. Warren Win Rayner, longtime Valley resident, passed away last Friday, May 20th. Win was an active member of the San Fernando Valley, Fernando Awards, and enjoyed playing golf at Woodland Hills Country Club. Win tried to teach me to play golf at Woodland Hills Country Club. He was a vocal and untiring supporter of law enforcement and crime victims' rights. He was admitted to law practice in 1946, maintained active status as a lawyer in California until 1996. Graduated from John Marshall School of Law in Chicago and a veteran of World War II. Win was a personal friend and a friend of many in the San Fernando Valley. May Warren Win Rayner rest in peace.
Other tributes? Colleagues, asked that we adjourn in memory of Manuel Cervantes Alvarado, born on June 11th, 1924, in Douglas, Arizona, was a resident of Pacoima since 1957, for 47 years. He lived there, married Angie Alvarado in June of 1951. They were married for 53 years. Manuel Alvarado was a member of the United States Army from 1943 to 1945, serving during World War II, and he became a lifetime member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars San Fernando Chapter. A quiet man with a strong presence, a family man who passed away from cancer at the age of 80. He survived by his wife Angie, four children, Belinda Alvarado, Manny Alvarado, Mary Cervantes, and Lori Duffy, 13 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. So we adjourn in his memory. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
If I'd known she was wearing pink, we would have gone pink, but they look very good. And give you this certificate of recognition and hear a few words from Joslyn.
Thank you so much, Councilman Eric Garcetti, and thank you to my friends and my family and friends who've made it possible. I also want to say that I am very proud to have women, my colleagues my age, and hopefully a lot of, actually a lot of younger women with me, but also mention Helen Brown here, who is truly a pioneer woman and was my inspiration along with my mother in really So I feel it's a privilege to be able to serve the city that we love, and I hope this inspires my other women colleagues to devote their life and energy and time to making Los
And before, before she leaves, we do have Helen Brown here in council chambers and as part of this presentation wanted to congratulate her on her 90th birthday. Today she turns 90 years old, one of the most passionate and hard-working women in Let me just very briefly say something about Helen, she was, very briefly about Helen, she was born in Manila where she lived until her high school years. After her graduation from there, she moved to the United States, eventually graduating from UCLA where she got her master's degree. She taught in the LA Unified School District, and she came into contact with many Filipino-Americans here, the schoolchildren, and she saw the need to lobby the school district to teach them about their history and to honor that history, and the schoolteachers who are Filipino-Americans as well. And she eventually was able to help a number of Filipino organizations come about, but upon her retirement from LAUSD, she decided to bring her library to the community. She created Parral, P-A-R-R-A-L, Filipino-American Reading Room and Library in 1985, later known as the Filipino-American Library, which is the first Filipino-American community library of its kind in the United States. As a Filipino national hero, Jose Rizal, who's the father of the modern Filipino nation, uses pen to influence the hearts and minds of his people. Helen Brown's vision similarly is to have the library open the hearts and minds to the beauty, the truth, and the honor of being Filipino or Filipino-American. So here with Helen Brown are her sons George and Jim Brown, board members of the Filipino-American Library, and we wanted from all of us in City Council to present you with this 90th birthday, birthday card. Thank you for everything you have done, Helen. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Okay, we can hear for a second from one of her sons, please.
I'm Helen's son, George Brown, and Helen asked me to just say a few words. She's very excited to be honored in her 90th birthday in such posh surrounding as the council chambers here. She's worked very hard throughout her life in being a teacher, and in the later years after she retired to found the Filipino-American Library, and she's extremely happy that that library has flourished and that is now a resource for students and teachers, and students at UCLA and SC who do their work and are all going programs in Asian-American studies. It's a very rich resource. She's very proud of that. Lastly, she wanted to wish the council members mabuhay. This is her birthday, so mabuhay to the city of LA, mabuhay to Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, George, and thank you, Mr. Zine. Congratulations, and our next recipients from the 6th District, Councilmember Tony
Thank you, Dennis. I'd like to first congratulate and welcome the Montague Charter Academy students that are here today. They came to honor their friend and their teacher, their educator, Shelly Bliston, who's my honoree. Actually, it's Rochelle Francis Bliston, but otherwise known as Shelly by all the people who care and love her very much, and for good reason. Shelly has been working at Montague Charter Elementary School as a mentor, as a driving force to make sure that that charter elementary school gets off the ground and is successful in every single way. For example, she has done many, many wonderful things that emanate not only from her abilities and her tenaciousness, but from her heart. When some of the children at this elementary school needed eyeglasses, she worked with lens crafters to make sure she got tens of thousands of service to these young people so that they could see. When some of the children didn't have shoes to come to school with, she made sure that she got them shoes. And also, when some of these children, she realized they didn't have dictionaries, what she did is she got 4,000 dictionaries, more than enough to fill the hands and the brains and the minds of the children at this charter elementary school at Montague. She actually went further and shared that with another school in the community, Pacoima Elementary as well, and gave the books to them. So not only does she do well for her constituents, whenever she has an overabundance of success, she shares that with the rest of the community. She's done wonderful things. She has garnered $1,000 grants, $7,500 grants, 500,000, 400,000, 10,000, 5,000, 200,000, 28,000, $66,000 worth of grants, and brought them to her students, brought them to her community, and that's why we're honoring her today. She goes above and beyond the call of duty, she does wonderful things, and also I need to point out, not only does she do that, she goes above and beyond the call of duty with her courage and acts of kindness. For example, Shelly goes to students' homes and assesses what their family needs are, not just what their educational needs. She goes there to realize what's their holistic needs. For example, when one family was in an abusive situation, she went further than to realize this is not only affecting their education, this is affecting their lives as a family, she got them help. So with that, it's my honor and privilege to stand with and to congratulate Shelly Bliston for being my Woman of the Year for the 6th Council District.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, and I wanted to present to you a wonderful, wonderful representation of what everyone here has done. These are the students of Mr. Chavez's 5th grade class, they're graduating next month. These boys and girls are there here in their uniforms. They are part of, we are considered a distinguished and successful charter school in the state of California, and with due respect to all my other colleagues in different schools, as an educator, I'm extremely pleased that this is your school and that on our state test scores, we got that designation because we outperformed the state and we outperformed the district. Because of hard work from you, you have always provided, the councilman has always provided a bus for me, and in fact, I think when he said courage, it was because one time I called his office, and Sergio, I know you're here, and I said I wouldn't put the children back on the bus. The bus driver was not someone that I would put children with, and Tony sent special cars from the city to pick us up from lens crafters. I think that is above and beyond, and we appreciate that. Those are the little things that make those kinds of projects possible, to move groups of children, and it wasn't one grade. We've taken children from pre-K through 5. We've done it year after year. Getting the money is due to wonderful people. I need to recognize Mr. Chavez, who's a former student and a talented, talented, talented teacher and actor. There you are, Mr. Chavez. His children, his students, love him. I need to recognize, my staff is out here from the reading center, we run the only not-for-profit reading clinic, and I'm the director of that. And when we talk about glasses for children, if they're not reading, what's missing? An eye check, an eye exam, and we have learned how many children from this screening, and again, Councilman Cardenas makes it possible. I want to recognize a very special lady who's come to our school for five years, bringing literacy and judiciary from the State Court of Appeals, is Judge Irene Server, who works with Mr. Chavez's class when they were in 3rd grades. She's been there a long time. Irene, come up here. The children have learned, they read to her. And my staff from the reading center is back there. I'm very humbled to be in the presence of so many courageous women who make a difference, and I applaud this group and the commission for taking the time to recognize different people and what they contribute to the welfare of the city. Because here are your future citizens, here are your future council members, and they came, and I wanted to share this with them because this is education in action. These will be the people who lead us tomorrow, so here they are. I applaud you.
Thank you, Shelly. You embody what it means to be Woman of the Year. The only way you can be Woman of the Year is if you're a woman of the moment, a woman making sure that you're taking care of what needs to be taken care of today, and also making sure that you're preparing these young people and the community for the future, and making sure that they take their best step forward. So thank you very much. You've earned this honor and accolade, and I'm sure you're going to be earning much more into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege. Thank you for this honor.
Let's take a picture real quick. Say cheese.
And I bet all the students love this field trip to City Hall today. Much better than sitting in school, right? Well, you don't get here unless you go to school, remember that. Thank you, congratulations. Our next recipient, Councilmember Ed Reyes, from the wonderful 1st District.
Thank you, Dennis. I want to thank everyone for their patience and the audience. Everyone is special here, but it's a great honor to have this opportunity to introduce Yasmin Merocorona for enthusiasm, dedication, tireless efforts in improving the quality of life for residents in the Pico Union Community and the people of Los Angeles. Yasmin lives in Pico Union area with her husband Andrew Corona, a Los Angeles City firefighter, paramedic. She is a project coordinator for Clean and Green, a program of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. When she moved to the Pico Union Community 13 years ago, she immediately saw the need for change. Her neighborhood block was a major thoroughfare for two gangs. She vowed to get involved and reclaim her community. She helped form the Pico Union Neighborhood Council. She has served on the Advice Committee Prevention Project with the Pico Union Revitalization Team. She was a Rampart volunteer for events such as the Rampart Open House, National Lightout, Operation Sparkle, Curfew Task Force, and the Citizens Patrol Unit. Her activism began 11 years ago when she attended her first Rampart Neighborhood Watch meeting. In 1995, Yasmin helped plan the annual Pico Union Harvest Festival, an annual event that unites residents through the celebration of folklore, art, literature, and performing arts. She has been an active participant in the planning of the streetscape of the Byzantine Latino Quarter and Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, LANI. During her seven years of service as a project area committee member, she's made recommendations that have been made through, have made for the redevelopment of the community through the Pico Union Redevelopment Agency. Her greatest passion has been coordinating the Pico Union Neighborhood Watch for the past nine years. This team of committee residents work closely with ALPD, the Council District Office, our office, the city attorney, the city departments, to resolve issues that have impacted the community. Yasmin has also founded a coalition to improve the quality of life in Rampart. The 15-member group held city officials accountable for the poor public safety services in their community. The group spearheaded the mayor's Operation Healthy Neighborhood Project. She has walked the extra mile educating ABC license holders in the Rampart area in reference to the Lee Law, in addition to coordinating several large community cleanups with the Pico Union Pride Day Committee. Yasmin's continued efforts, optimism, dedication to reclaiming Pico Union shows what a tremendous difference one person can make in renewing her community. Yasmin, because of your remarkable accomplishments, gives me great pleasure to recognize you as Pioneer Woman of the Year.
Okay. I'm honored to receive this award. I'd like to thank the council office, the councilmen, and their fabulous staff, because without them, I would not be able to accomplish as much as I do, because they're there, they're always there supporting all the issues we have in our community, whether bad or good. I also like to thank my husband. He's my right hand, actually, although he likes to stay on the sidelines, and he has put himself his own title of sideline support and logistics. He's always there supporting all my issues.
I'd like to give these flowers to both you and Andy for all their hard work.
And thank you for your patience. I'm going to deviate for a second here, because we have a very, very important person, and I, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank him for his patience. I'd like to call up Alexis Argüello. Just give him a round of applause, folks. He was born on April 19th, 1952, in Nicaragua, is best known as a former world champion boxer. As a kid growing up, I used to watch him on all the sports channels as he fought his way through the top ranks. He has fought tremendous fighters and is a hero, an icon for many Central Americans throughout this continent, both north and south. He was a featherweight champion who defended his title several times. He moved up in weight class and later became the junior lightweight champion, and there defended his title several times against fighters such as Bobby Chacon and Rafael Limón. Alexis Argüello moved up his weight class yet again, and eventually became only the fifth boxer to win titles in three world categories, the first in 41 years, and the first ever Latin American boxer to have done so. He is now a member of the International Boxing Hall of Fame. But members of the council, I am not here particularly because I need to laud his feats as a boxer, but rather I am here to laud Alexis Argüello, the national hero. Because before us today, he is not Alexis Argüello, but rather the Honorable Vice Mayor of Managua, Nicaragua, Alexis Argüello. Indeed, following his illustrious career, and over the course of time, Alexis Argüello has dedicated himself not only to serve his country as a hero, but has decided to become one of his countries, specifically Managua's public servant. So it gives me great honor to present to you a visiting dignitary, the Honorable Alexis Argüello, a very patient man, very understanding man, for sharing this morning with us.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. President, the members of the committee, I want to thank Mr. Ed Reyes, and to each and every one of you, and to Bea Ricos, Antonio, congratulate you for your winning last week and the election, to win the mayor's office. I know you're going to do a good job. And I'm here to thank each one, every one of you, every member. In 1974, I won my first world title in this city.
fifth boxer to win titles in three world categories. The first in 41 years, and the first ever Latin American boxer to have done so. He is now a member of the International Boxing Hall of Fame. But members of the council, I am not here particularly because I need to laud his feats as a boxer, but rather I am here to laud Alexis Argüello, the national hero. Because before us today, he is not Alexis Argüello, but rather the Honorable Vice Mayor of Managua, Nicaragua, Alexis Argüello. Indeed, following his illustrious career, and over the course of time, Alexis Argüello has dedicated himself not only to serve his country as a hero, but has decided to become one of his countries, specifically Managua's public servant. So, it gives me great honor to present to you a visiting dignitary, the Honorable Alexis Argüello, a very patient man, very understanding man, for sharing this morning with us.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. President, the members of the committee, I want to thank Mr. Ed Reyes, and to each and every one of you, and to Villarigosa. Antonio congratulates you for your winning last week and the election, to win the mayor's office. I know you're going to do a good job. And I'm here to thank each and every one of you. I remember in 1974, I won my first world title in this city, in Los Angeles. That was a long, long time ago. It was November the 23rd, 1974, and here in a forum, in Inglewood, California. I won my first title, I won my second title, I won my third title. I defend my three titles 23 times. But the most important issue just happened three months ago, in November last year, when I won the vice mayor's office, because four years ago, I became involved, not because I wanted to be a politician, but my people asked me to do it. Because I love my country, they know that, and they look forward for me to keep doing the right thing for my people. And this last three months, we have done a great job, we have invested most of the budget already, because we go into the second term right now, in June, we're going to redo the budget to be able to produce more sports, more cultural events, and more social service in our city, which is about five districts. And in every district, I want to develop health clinics to serve all the needy people. We are developing public dormitories for the people, and in other words, I'm doing it full, all my heart, and every penny is invested in the city, because I love my city, and I'm doing it for my city. It's like John F. Kennedy said once, "It's not what the country can do for me, but what I can do for my country." And that's what happened, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I'll appreciate this, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, before you leave, let me call on Mr. Parks, who would like to give you greetings.
Champion, I just want to say a couple of words. You've been a remarkable athlete, you've been the class, and then many times in the boxing profession, somebody says, "It's not always done in a classy way," but you always handled yourself as a true champion. And as I mentioned to you yesterday, that's when we had real champions, because there weren't all of these different sanctioning bodies that we have today, that you can't keep track of them. But to see that you won three world championships, that you defended them against everyone that would come up in that weight, and remarkable to move up in weight and continue to be the champion that you are, just has been a role model for so many. We just hope that everyone that chooses that kind of sport would use you as a role model, not only in the ring, but how you conducted yourself out of the ring, no controversies, no scandals, just being a gentleman and a true champion. And I just wanted to say thank you. We really want to work with you, as you talked the other day about the Sister City program, and we're really looking forward to having you come back more often.
Thank you, Bernard. And from now, I already, I made the request, not officially, I would like to get into this program, Sister City, Managua with Los Angeles. I love Los Angeles, I love you guys, and thank you, Bernard, for giving this opportunity. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you.
Councilmember Jan Perry from the Great 9th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I am honored to present an exceptional woman and good friend for the 2005 Pioneer Woman Award in the 9th Council District. She is Ruth Schwartz, the founder and executive director of Shelter Partnership, a nonprofit public-private partnership which provides technical, developmental material, and public policy support for the Los Angeles housing system for the homeless as a means to end homelessness in our region. Over the past 19 years, Shelter Partnership has assisted in the creation of both transitional and permanent affordable housing with social support services for homeless individuals and families. Shelter Partnership has been instrumental in securing permanent housing for over 7,000 homeless individuals and families at rents they can afford. Shelter Partnership also performs critical studies on homelessness and the housing delivery system. These include the needs of domestic violence victims, single women, emancipated foster youth, people dealing with dual diagnosis of mental illness and substance abuse, and a major study on housing, the housing needs of homeless and low-income persons living with HIV and AIDS. Shelter Partnership was instrumental in Los Angeles's designation as the second homeless initiative city by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, which resulted in the community receiving a $20 million grant for innovative homeless efforts. The partnership also regularly advises local governments on public policy and programmatic issues, and has played key roles in the development of the City of Los Angeles's Section 8 Homeless Assistance Program and the Regional Housing for Persons with AIDS Program. In 2003, the Shelter Partnership took the lead role in developing the L.A. Hope Project, a multi-agency collaborative designed to secure permanent supportive housing and employment to homeless individuals who have been chronically homeless and have mental illness. Since 1999, and under Ruth's leadership, Shelter Partnership has worked closely with our city and county, and the County Department of Mental Health, in developing housing in conjunction with the innovative state-funded Integrated Services for Homeless Mentally Ill Program, otherwise known as AB 2000, I'm sorry, 2000, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. 2034, I'm tired, I'm sorry. We've been waiting a long time. I need to, I know, I know. Anyway, Ruth has been a friend to the 9th District, and an advocate for the homeless, and a real partner in our city's initiatives to improve shelter opportunities for the homeless. She's the ideal pioneer woman who empowers others to find success in their lives, and will always, always speak the truth to anyone who will listen. I want to thank Ruth for her courage, tenacity, and determination, and you inspire all of us through your work. And I'm going to present this cert, and also, I just wanted to let you know that our bouquet to you has our city flower in it, the bird of paradise. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jan Perry, and it's great working with you and your staff. I want to introduce my board vice chair, Dan Moorfield, who's here with us today, and my sister, my little sister, who's taller than me, Debbie Gold. And it's been great working with the city for these last 20 years. I think we've accomplished a great deal working together. Thousands more people are getting into housing and leaving homelessness permanently. Obviously, there's a lot more that needs to be done, but it's a great time to be working this field, because there really are resources, for the first time in a long time, to assist. And I want to thank the councilwoman, as well as the rest of the council, for your leadership in that. And I also want to sort of dedicate this award to my good friend Dennis Alba, who passed away in December. Dennis was the vice chair of Comic Relief, and he co-founded Shelter Partnership with me. He was very young, he was in his early 60s, he died of cancer. He provided a lot of support, millions of dollars in funding for agencies providing healthcare and housing for people who are homeless in L.A. County. So, I accept this award in memory of Dennis and all that he did. Thank you.
Congratulations. Our next recipients coming from the 5th District, Councilmember Jack Weiss.
Thank you, thank you for waiting so long, Dr. Gonzalez. Colleagues, I have with me here Dr. Elma Gonzalez from UCLA. She has an extraordinary background, an extraordinary story, an extraordinary record in directing programs that have helped minority students succeed in scientific research careers over a generation. She's the director of UCLA's Minority Access to Research Careers Program, which is funded by the NIH, and recent graduates of her program have gone on to graduate school at Harvard, Yale, Princeton, I would assume, right? They just told me about Harvard and Yale, but I...
Princeton, Columbia?
Not Princeton, but they're working on that. Columbia, and a whole bunch of other impressive places. She's a professor of biology in the Department of Ecology and Evolutionary Biology at UCLA. She was born in northern Mexico, and Elma, her mother, and her small brother joined their father in the United States when she was only six years old. And as a teenager, she followed migrant farm labor routes with her family, all throughout the United States, and would spend the years with her family picking crops. Her father was a day laborer, but she stuck to it, went on through several years and several levels of education, finally receiving her PhD in cellular biology at Rutgers in 1972. She has become a national leader in programs and activity that support training and access for women and minorities in the sciences. She is an extraordinary story, an extraordinary inspiration, and because I have the great privilege to represent UCLA while I'm on the council, I thought it would be fitting to bring in someone from the 5th District, who has done so much for our entire city and our entire nation in providing opportunities for those who, like her, hadn't been given every opportunity and every advantage in life. She's been an incredible role model, and she's helped send so many other role models on to successful careers in the sciences. So, congratulations, Elma Gonzalez. You more than deserve this honor today. Thank you very much for being with us.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honor to be so recognized by this body of very outstanding individuals, yourselves, and also to be in the company of all these women who have achieved so much. And I kind of envy you, because those of you who have, are working on programs that have an immediate reward, and you see the things that you do bear fruit, and mine is a little bit longer term. I'm sending students out to graduate school, which can take six years, seven years, and then they post-doc, and then they start their careers. So, you know, we're not going to see the fruits of their giving back, which is really what I'm aiming for, for, you know, 15 years from now. So, it's a long process, and what I'm hoping is that by looking at me here, to see the evidence that these things work, that the community will become more invested in preparing students to come to places like UCLA, where really, truly, the future begins for them. And I just hope that we can get better schools and better programs and activities that lead toward that goal. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to carry this?
Yes.
Congratulations, Doctor. And we've got two left, and thank you for your patience. A mayor-elect council member, Antonio Villarigosa, from the 14th Council District.
Good afternoon, everybody. I have the honor of announcing my Pioneer Woman Award to PK Kandau, who's done an incredible job with co-founding the Renaissance Arts Academy in 2003 in Eagle Rock with Sidney Myrick. It's a school that I'm very proud of. I had a little bit, just a tiny bit, to do with that Renaissance Arts Academy. They were looking for home. Well, actually, we first met, I was doing an opening for a juice store in my district, and a lot of hoopla in the 14th Council Manic District, and along comes a group of women who say, "You've got to do something about the fact that the fire department won't give us our permits, we're opening up our school this week, you've got to do something about that, please." And we went over there and got the fire department talking with the school, and then they said we need a bigger facility, and then we started talking about finding one, and, lo and behold, we found a facility that's housing the Ren Arts Music and Performing Arts Charter School, serving children from throughout the 14th Council Manic District. It's a highly-ranked charter school, brand new, and a great example of the kind of things that are happening in some of these charter schools right now. This charter school brings young people from the surrounding area, from Alserino, from Echo Park, from Silver Lake, from Eagle Rock, from Highland Park, from Mount Washington, Cypress Park, Lincoln Heights, all of the surrounding areas. Some of the high schools there, they're all great schools, but some of their scores aren't where folks would like them, and they're oftentimes overcrowded and the like. And what's so great about Ren Arts Academy is you have young kids taking performing arts, taking music and instruments, they're learning Latin, they're taking physics, they're taking advanced, you know, literature, all in one room, about 100 or so kids, and these are the same kids that come from the surrounding schools that don't have those kinds of offerings. And it's just a great example of what you can do when parents and teachers are coming together and making things happen at a charter school. It's a place where parents are welcome, and they're very involved, and PK has just been, you know, the driving force behind all of this. And so, we wanted to acknowledge you as a pioneer, as somebody who's on the cutting edge, doing the right thing, showing that young people who live in the communities that I represent can be an advanced curriculum that's very much like a Renaissance curriculum, because it has all the things that you'd want a young person to do. Music, performing arts, and high expectations, and drama, and all of the things that they do there. So, we wanted to acknowledge you, and also share with people just... She's an Emmy Award-winning producer of the hit series Cagney and Lacy, and the former director of current programs at CBS Television. She's won an Emmy, the Humanitas Prize, the Luminous Award for Excellence in Film and Television, the Women in Film, Lillian Gish Award for Broadcast Excellence, the Golden Globe Dominations, and she did a residency at the Tyrone Guthrie Center for the Arts in County Monahan, Ireland. I'm very honored to present this Pioneer Woman Award to PK Kandau for the work that you've done throughout your life, but especially in forming and putting together a great charter school in the 14th Council Manic District. Congratulations, PK Kandau.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm very honored to receive this recognition from our mayor-elect, and on behalf of my co-founder and co-director Sidney Myrick, and all the kids at Ren Arts, I would like to thank you. One of the things that we founded this school, one of the things that we had in mind, is watching the funding for arts education keep getting cut and cut and cut, so that, so that the money can be put into raising the academic scores. One of the things we wanted to show is that you can have kids come in, spend an hour and a half a day doing the arts, and still perform very, very successfully in the academics, to utilize the arts as an access to academic excellence. And I know that our mayor-elect and this council are very dedicated now to trying to find ways to help students all across the city, and I really commend you in that. And I really look forward to working together to try and find ways to make sure that every student in Los Angeles can have access to a really wonderful, fulfilling education. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition for being the 2005 Pioneer Woman of the Los Angeles Commission on the Status of Woman, here in the 14th Council Manic District.
Thank you, and congratulations. We have our final recipient, Councilmember Martin Ludlow, is unavailable this morning and this afternoon, and we're going to do this presentation to Patricia Means by the president of the Commission on Status of Women. Leslie, you're going to make the presentation, and we want to add that flowers were previously... Leslie, you're going to make the presentation, and we want to add that flowers were previously delivered, so we're not shortchanging you on your recognition. They've been pre-delivered by the council office of Councilmember Martin Ludlow. Thank you.
Ms. Means cofounded Turning Point Magazine after the 1992 uprising in Los Angeles to address the lack of positive portrayals of African-Americans in the media. Through Turning Point's 13-year journey to become the only medium, print or broadcast, specifically targeting African-Americans of influence in California, Ms. Means acquired full ownership of the publication in 1995, and in 2001, Turning Point Magazine expanded its message and services to a national audience. Knowing firsthand the obstacles that African-American business owners face, this business trailblazer positioned Turning Point Communications as a viable vehicle to assist entrepreneurs keeping abreast of the ever-changing business paradigm by creating entrepreneurial development events such as the very successful annual National African-American Business Summit and Access to Success Business Tour. Through her efforts, Ms. Means, many small business owners have realized their dreams of becoming productive and profitable parts of the American economy. By the same gesture, Ms. Means has provided a direct diversity vehicle for corporate America to reach the multi-billion-dollar black small business market. Recognized as an advocate for minority small business, Ms. Means was appointed to the National Congressional Small Business Task Force by Representative Juanita Melner-McDonald. Ms. Means is president of the TPC Foundation, Inc., and sits on the board of the Genesee Center, a South Los Angeles shelter for battered women and their children. So, on behalf of Councilmember Ludlow and as a resident of the 10th district, it is my pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to Shontay Moore Morgan on behalf of Patricia Means. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'll keep this brief. As editor of Turning Point, it's my pleasure to represent Patricia Means, the publisher of Turning Point Magazine. She's doing what she does best, informing, inspiring, and influencing African-American small businesses, and couldn't be with us this afternoon. However, she wanted me to send a message and let you know that she will continue to represent the community here in all of her endeavors as she travels the country through Access to Success, giving the message that small African-American businesses are powerful forces in the economy. And also, we'd like to invite you to the 8th Annual African-American Business Summit this year in the Palm Springs area. So, please join us this summer. Thank you.
And Patricia, thank you. The flowers were delivered, I hope. We've been told by the council office, Councilmember Martin Ludlow. In that, for the 2005 Pioneer Women Awards from the 15 council districts, we've done the presentation, so congratulations to all. I know it started early and it ended late. We appreciate the patience, the understanding, but it's a very significant award for those individuals in the 15 council districts who are recognized by their elected councilmembers. So, Madam President, we're going to turn it back to you for the conclusion of our council session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I believe we still have some non-Pioneer Woman resolutions. Let me recognize Councilmember Parks. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Madam President?
Mr. Cardenas.
Madam President, I just wanted to thank Dennis Zine and his staff for doing such a wonderful job this year. My office had a couple of special requests, and they handled it wonderfully. I just want to say thank you so much for all your hard work, and everything turned out wonderfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have two presentations. I'd like to ask Mr. Nicholas West, Ms. Kay Allen, Michael Despar, and Jeanette Levert to come up, and they are here being honored as part of the program in the 8th district called Arts in the Village. To give you an idea of what Arts in the Village started in 2002-2003, the program is a partnership between USC Fisher Gallery and the University Village Shopping Center, the USC Family of Schools, which includes Folshay, Norwood Street Schools, St. Agnes, St. Vincent's, 32nd Street, USC Magnet, Vermont Avenue, and LB Weems Elementary. And that's one of the best-kept secrets in the 8th district that we have, this partnership with USC in which these young people, attaining a certain grade-point average, certainly have the ability to be considered favorably for attendance at USC in their future. So, this is something that is very positive. The Art in the Village program is a grant-funded program, and its art competition sponsored in part by USC's Good Neighbor Outreach Grant Program. It's open to all students, K through five, and that attend the USC Family of Schools. The purpose of the program is to provide students the opportunity to create art based upon a pre-selected theme in the classroom in an effort to offer exhibition themes that are easy to integrate into the curriculum. With that, they also, as the villages begin sending flyers to the schools to get participation, they select some processes very competitive. They allow over 30 artworks, artworks from the admissions to go on exhibition, and these kids get a very thorough review as the guidelines and the final selection. The Art in the Village competition winners are selected to have their artwork professionally installed with the USC Fisher Gallery staff at the University Village Shopping Center. And so, with that, we have with Art in the Village exhibit, these are some of the themes of the past. If I were president, friendship, reach for the stars, teamwork, what money can't buy, life on other planets, and I will survive. They found that studies show that students who are involved in art perform better in other disciplines. A review of the existing research on education in visual and performing arts conducted by the Association of Arts of Education found that art are fun for kids and help keep the kids in school and working to learn. Art requires self-discipline, creativity. Arts represent many ways of experience and understanding the world, and arts removes boundaries and allows students to explore. Whoever, recognition resolution today in honor of Arts in the Village, we'd like to ask...
You so eloquently put everything I was going to say out there.
No, come on up here. You've still got to talk.
I still got to talk. I will turn it over for some thank yous to Nicholas West.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. Art in the Village is a wonderful program, and we just need to thank a few people who have helped us along the way. We've now received our fourth year of funding from the USC Neighborhood Outreach Campaign, and we couldn't have done it without the help of the councilman and his staff, Monique Roberson in particular, Kathy Logan at the University Village, Peggy Henchke and Kathy Diaz at USC Civic and Community Relations, Sal Maholo at the Fisher Gallery for her leadership, Matt Driggs from Fisher Gallery for his wonderful installations. I'd also like to thank the school facilitators and the teachers at the schools for helping us to create this successful program, as well as Ted Johnson, our community partner, who is the assistant principal at LB Weems Elementary. Also, the Good Neighbors Campaign is now in its 10th year of fundraising. It collects donations from USC faculty and staff and has raised over $700,000 this past year to fund programs that the funds are then released back into the community through these grant-funded programs such as Art in the Village. I'd also like to thank Jeanette Levier, who is the original grant writer, and she's standing right here next to me. She saw the need and filled it, and she wrote the original grant to receive the funding from USC UNO. And just thank you, Jeanette, for starting this wonderful program.
You have another presentation?
Ms. Levier, come back up here. I'm sorry. I have a special one for you. For being the founder of the program, we have a little special one. You don't have to share it with everyone else, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
The next, I'd like to ask Natalie Green, Union Bank of California, Marlon Walker, Maurice Williams, Renetta Tyson, and Sarah Elena Loza... Luiza. Luiza. And these are members, and they're accepting their resolution today from the United Negro College Fund, which is going to participate in their 23rd Annual Walk for Education Walk-A-Thon. And this is going to be held Saturday, May 21st. It's the United Negro College Fund expects several thousand people to participate in this worthwhile event in the City of Los Angeles in exposition park. They created this Walk for Education Walk-A-Thon to help raise funds in order to provide minority students with an opportunity to earn a college education. The 23rd Annual Walk for Education Walk-A-Thon. Activities will include a 5K walk, a kiddie walk for the toddlers, a post-walk festival, and following this year's walk, featuring refreshment activities for the kids. They will also have notable media coverage, including NBC Channel 4, also Hot 92, also 92.3 FM, will broadcast live from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The United Negro College Fund is the nation's largest, oldest, and most successful and most comprehensive minority higher education assistance program. The funds provide operating funds and technology-enhancing services for 38 historical black colleges and universities, scholarships and internships to students at nearly 1,000 institutions, as well as faculty and administrative professional training. Support approximately 65,000 students at about 1,000 colleges and universities, of which 60% of the students are the first in their family to attend college, and 62% have an annual family income of less than $25,000. The United Negro College Fund has raised more than $2 billion in over 60 years, and the total of more than 300,000 students attend college. The graduates have made a lasting contribution in the nation by building successful careers in the field of business, politics, health care, arts, and many others. We have a resolution here, not only honoring them for this upcoming 22nd year, but also the work they do nationwide as it relates to the United Negro College Fund.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Parks. Thank you very much to the distinguished councilmembers, to our mayor-elect Villarosa. We are very, very pleased to accept this proclamation and this award today, and I'm very, very pleased to be joined by some of our very dedicated volunteers for our efforts. With me today is Natalie Green with Union Bank of California, who is also one of our title sponsors, Marlon Walker, who is a dedicated volunteer, and he represents the networkers group of Southern California Edison, and my dear friend Sarah Elena Loza, who is representing the Latino Media Consultants. All three of these people, as well as their companies and many other companies, have joined with us to support our efforts so that the United Negro College Fund can continue our mission of keeping the doors of our 39-member institutions open so that we can continue to serve many of our deserving but disadvantaged young people so that they can achieve their dream of obtaining a college education. And it's through recognition like this today, along with the financial support of our many supporters and contributors, that we can continue our mission and go forward and continue to serve more students from the greater Los Angeles area and all across the country. And we greatly appreciate this recognition. We would definitely love for everyone here and all of your friends and family to join with us tomorrow in our Walk for Education. Registration begins at 7:30 AM. The walk program will begin at 8 o'clock, and the walk itself will start at 8:30 AM in exposition park across from the California Natural History Museum, and we'd love to see you all there.
Thank you very much. We now move to public comment, general public comment. First, we have Greg Fuentes. Is Greg Fuentes present? Okay, please come forward. Also, Mallrose Larry Green, Candido Mares, and Warren Williams. Please proceed.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Greg Fuentes. I'm a city resident. I'm also an attorney who has represented local governments in cable TV and telecommunications for over a decade. Last Friday, the Board of Information Technology Commissioners adopted new customer service The public input process for these standards began in late January 2005. During the past three months, I have provided, at my expense, over 50 pages of comments on these standards, the draft standards, and I've provided these comments to this city council as well as to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners. Now, the standards adopted by the board last Friday remain highly flawed. I strongly recommend to this council that it assert jurisdiction in a timely manner so that the standards can be improved. I do not contest that the city's multichannel video standards are somewhat outdated. However, if they're going to be changed, they should be improved considerably. Now, I'm going to just briefly discuss the problems with the standards. First, they do not provide some consumer protections that the current standards that we have provide to consumers. Second, they do not provide certain protections that we should receive in modern standards, and some of these proposed protections were brought to the commission's attention already. Third, these standards no longer expressly mention the direct broadcast satellite industry. According to the city's own reports, there are 60, 70, maybe far more, 1,000 DBS subscribers in the city. The current standards expressly mention DBS industry. These do not mention it, and I have no idea why the board decided to leave DBS customers out of the protective umbrella of the standards. Fourth, these standards are very poorly drafted. They mention sections that do not exist. They have a lot of definitional problems. Frankly, these standards are so poorly drafted that they are an embarrassment to the second-largest city of the United States. Fifth, these standards are probably going to result in further delays in the cable television franchise renewal process. Frankly, time is going to be spent in negotiations dealing with these standards flaws, and as we know, the franchise renewal process has lagged way too far, and it's going... These standards are going to lead to further delays. Now, I am going to provide additional written comments to this city council by this Monday. I thank you for your attention, and certainly, if you have any questions at this point in time or in the future, I would be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. Next, I think we have Mr. Warren Williams.
To the city council and to the citizens of Los Angeles, I filed three claims today on the city. The first claim is on a daily news article of Native Fifty saying that City Hall is being sold, or concerns that City Hall being sold by the leading candidates, and some of the candidates, those in the mayor race. If that's true, then action needs to be taken to correct that problem in the best interest of the residents of Los Angeles. I also filed a complaint with the Elections Division because I am a writing candidate for mayor of Los Angeles. And a lot of cities have complained to me that they did not know the process to write the name in, and even at the polls, they were given the wrong information. So, the writing candidate created a flawed election, which makes it an unfair election. I submitted to the Elections Division on the 16th, gave them ways to remedy the problem, and they did not follow through. So, technically, the election is not a one election. It would not be won anywhere until the votes are counted, but they need to correct the problem, and therefore, there needs to be a new election. The third... The third item has to do with an issue of an African town. A mayor and a city's responsibility is to make sure there is not discrimination in the city. The continuation of discrimination against a particular group of people where you have a Chinatown and other things, and then neglect the people, and then stigmatize them, saying you need more police officers in a given neighborhood where you, the city fails to provide the resources and the means to ensure quality living that will prevent homelessness, unemployment, lack of business opportunities. An African town would help build a steam of meaning of our young people. It would give opportunity to a lot of business people to be in a given area to conduct their businesses. It should not be an African town like the Kingdom Day Parade where a lot of other races are in the parade, meaning them a business person that's profiting off the exploitation of a lot of people. Instead, it has to be an African town that's ensuring, not like the Baldwin Crenshaw Mall, but is ensuring that a lot of African Americans are business owners and therefore are having a thriving business within their own community with their own businesses. So, the city has neglected the African American population all of these years and have failed to give the African American population their own Africa town. And I find it to be discriminatory. I believe that anyone properly looking at this fairly would also find it discrimination. So, we ask for that to be corrected. So, we make a motion to you, ask any of you to follow through with this, to have a motion that the charter needs to be changed in regards to writing candidates, that the city council and the mayor's office can move forward to ensure that there is an African town that's created here in Los Angeles. And again, fair to all citizens of Los Angeles, the ethics commission has an obligation to all of us. They have failed an obligation. Either the Daily News or May the fifth of two thousand and five has given false and misleading information in other media, and much of the statements that candidates have attacked each other, I'm not included in that. I might speak in the best interest of the citizens and the city and the future of Los Angeles. But if these things are true, then who do we have who's elected? Do we in fact have somebody who have already made deals and have already sold City Hall to outside contributors?
Can you please begin to wrap up your thoughts, please?
Yes. My conclusion is, is that at present, this council, by the constitution, by what is claimed of this country, that everyone has a right to run for an office. Their claim is made, everyone is to run with a fair election, and it's the issues of what is just and right. It is obvious that some persons, when we're inquired on front-page radio about having an African town, did nothing about it. So, we have, again, a double standard and a divide, and people who are employed to ensure that the ethical processes carried out, and they have not done their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, Mr. Larry Green and Candido Mares have filled out speaker cards, so I call their name once again. Okay, they are no longer present. That closes the public comment section of our meeting today. Next, does anybody, would anybody like, let's all rise for adjournment motions. Begin with Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. With a heavy heart, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Daniel Artyaga Falcone. He passed away May ninth peacefully at home, surrounded by his family. Daniel Falcone was born on June tenth, nineteen fifteen, in Pachuca, Hidalgo, Mexico. He immigrated to Los Angeles in nineteen forty-three, became a citizen of the United States in nineteen ninety-six. His life revolved around his community, his passion for gardening, baseball, and building many things. Most of all, he built up a great family. One member is his son, Dan Falcone Junior, who is also a member of the city family as a former employee of the Housing Department, did tremendous work for us after the earthquakes, and continues to work with the city, building up homes and communities. I just want to give my heartfelt condolences to the family. He's survived by his wife of fifty-two years, Beatriz Falcone, three children, Arturo, Ana, and Daniel, eight grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren. He is sorely missed.
Okay. Yes, by Ms. Perry, also myself, and we'd just like to offer our condolences to the entire Falcone family and all the lives that your father has touched. Thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Falcone is with us this day. I want to thank him for his patience and sharing this moment with us. I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Kenneth Erheim. He passed away May fourth. He was an active community leader in the Victor Heights, otherwise known as Forgotten Edge area, for over fifteen years. He served as president of the Victor Heights Neighborhood Watch for many years. Ken was a World War II veteran and worked in the entertainment industry as a financial analyst. During the past year, Ken continued to be active in the community, was president of the Patient Rights Association at the VA Hospital. A funeral memorial for Kenneth was held on May eleventh at Hollywood Lutheran Church. Mr. Erheim was seventy-nine years old. He's a community that will be missed by all. He's survived by his son, Gary Hiles, a son who lives in Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other adjournments? Councilman Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three adjournment motions. First one is Rafi Simon, president and CEO of Iron Shield Protection Agency, and has been in that security business for over twenty-five years. He offered a wide range of services worldwide to his clients. He was a leading small business person in the city of Los Angeles, a very active member of various security and law enforcement organizations, and certainly was a well-respected in his community. He was born July twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty. He passed away at the age of fifty-four on Friday, May thirteenth. Funeral services will be today at two-thirty at Hollywood Hills Forest Lawn. He leaves his wife, Deborah. Mr. Zine would like to second that.
Okay, second of mine, Mr. Zine.
And then also Velma Green, born in Shreveport, Louisiana, in nineteen twenty-nine. She met her husband, Hubert Green, who was a retired LA police officer in the third grade in Shreveport in nineteen forty-five. Her family moved to South Los Angeles just one week after the Green family also moved to Los Angeles. She graduated from Jefferson High School, married Hubert in nineteen forty-nine, just one day after her twentieth birthday. They had a daughter, Linda. She was a thirty-seven-year employee at LA Unified School District. She, as her pride and joy, was the founder of an organization called La Paus, Los Angeles Police Officers' Wives, which is the first black police officer's wives organization in the history of the California law enforcement. She also was a very active member of the National Council of Negro Women, where she served as president several times. She was married to Hubert for over fifty-five years until his death in August of two thousand and four, which we also adjourned in his memory. She passed away just nine months later at the age of seventy-six. Funeral service is held yesterday. She leaves her daughter, Linda, and a host of other relatives. And my final one is Dr. Carmen Parrot. She was a devoted member of the Association of Black Women Physicians and a dermatologist who practiced in Los Angeles at the Kaiser West LA Hospital. She also served as assistant clinical professor of dermatology at King Drew Medical Center. She published articles in a variety of medical journals. She was a member of a variety of organizations, the National Medical Association, Association of Black Women Physicians, the California Medical Association, and also the Los Angeles County Medical Association. She completed resident training in the University of Pennsylvania in dermatology and joined the Kaiser Permanente family in nineteen ninety-eight. Passed away on May fifteenth. Outstanding contributions and valuable services. Her funeral will be held at Angeles Funeral Home on Thursday, May nineteenth.
Thank you. Any more adjournments? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll. We're now adjourned.